Okay. Well, we can proceed then, I guess, if it's just we're missing Facebook, whatever the will is.
IT tells us to restart.
We're up, okay. We are back. Thank you for that brief commercial. We will, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, you've received a number of messages related to the public agenda. There's any comments? Is there any one or any, any single or multiple ones that you would like to, to read out loud or have presented? I don't see any. And I don't quite have the total number of public comments, but it's quite a few. So, okay. Receive a motion to receive and file?
So moved?
Second.
Motion to receive and file the public comments. Being none, no other comment. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting, minutes of April 8th, 2020.
Commissioners, you've seen a copy of the minutes from the April 8th meeting. If you had a chance to review, any, any comments or corrections? Being none?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second. Being no comment, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis? Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations, item B, proclamation declaring correctional officers week.
Commissioners, I have a couple of proclamations. Read the first one here. Whereas in 1962, the United States Congress first passed public law, 87-726, designating May 15th of each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day, honoring federal, state, and local officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty, and the corresponding week as Police Week. And whereas, over the years, devoted law enforcement officers of America have courageously sacrificed their personal safety while working on behalf of the people. And whereas, because of their steadfast efforts to enforce our laws, we as citizens can enjoy a system of peace and order. And whereas, Sedgwick County desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of not only its own sheriff's deputies, but peace officers everywhere. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman Pete Meisner, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 10th to 16th, 2020, as Police Week in Sedgwick County, and call upon our citizens to show their sincere appreciation for the many law enforcement officers of Sedgwick County, past, present, and their legacy of humble, dedicated service to the community, today, May 6th, 2020. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
And second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, there's been a motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. And the second proclamation is also related. First one was Police Week. This one is Correction Officers Week. Whereas in 1984, then-President Ronald Reagan signed Proclamation 5187, creating National Correctional Officers Week. The first full week in May has since been recognized as National Correctional Officers Week to honor the work of correctional officers and correctional personnel nationwide. And whereas, the dedication of these correctional officers and detention deputies who serve our community quietly, taking on very difficult and dangerous duties. And whereas, we would be unable to operate our adult and juvenile detention facilities and community correction programs without the hard work of these professionals that staff these facilities 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And whereas, Sedgwick County, Kansas, is pleased to join in celebrating Correctional Officers Week, recognizing these men and women who risked their lives and served so diligently and faithfully. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Pete Meisner, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week, May 3rd through May 9th, 2020, as Correctional Officers Week in Sedgwick County, and encourage all citizens to honor and show sincere appreciation for the correctional officers who make it possible to keep the detention and correctional facilities safe each day, today, May 6th, 2020. You've heard the proclamation?
I move we approve, adopt?
Motion, motion to approve or adopt?
Second.
Second.
Can I make a comment before we vote?
Commissioner Dennis, before we vote.
Thanks, sir.
Yes.
Normally each year, we have a very moving ceremony jointly with the City of Wichita for Police Officers Week to recognize the sacrifices that each of those individuals have made for our community. Unfortunately, this year, because of COVID-19 virus, that's going to be done virtually. And they will be talking about them and showing their pictures. But it doesn't diminish the respect that we have for each and every one of those that have given their life. And I just want to make a statement that I believe that our county and our citizens deserve to give a great deal of support to each of those individuals that have made the ultimate sacrifice. So I appreciate being able to say a few words. And with that, you've got a motion and second. Thank you.
Right. Thank you for your comments. I've got a comment from Sheriff Easter too, after we vote. So being no other comments, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. And received this note from Sheriff Easter. Obviously, he was not here this morning and with the virus, with the COVID, it's limits our, our stuff, so. But he sent this note. The Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office wishes to thank the Commissioners for their proclamations for Law Enforcement Week and Corrections Week. We understand the restraints that have occurred due to COVID-19. However, we appreciate all the support the Commissioners have given us during this time. Although we do, we will not be able to conduct the law enforcement memorial this year, we will still remember all of our fallen deputies and their families during Law Enforcement Memorial Week. Thank you again for your kind gesture, Sheriff Jeff Easter. Sheriff, thanks for the kind message and you and your, and your group. I can't say anything a lot more than what Commissioner Dennis had said, but thank you, and we appreciate every day, especially in times right now when you're in the front with this COVID virus running around. So, thank you. And the memorial service has always been great to witness. It's been pretty humbling and pretty emotional for many. And sorry that we're not having it this year. Let's hope we'll have a great one and a good memorial service next year. So, thank you for that. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business, item D, Sedgwick County Health Department update on COVID-19.
Chairman, before Adrian hits the podium, let me try to cover quite a few topics under this one item. First, Adrian will go ahead and give her usual COVID infection track update and other health department news. Tim will be here in person to talk about an update on testing and what is new this week on that front. Rusty will be on remote on the phone to talk about PPE supplies and new information on that front. Then Tanya Cole and Adrian will tag team the county recovery plan template that we sent you all and that you have a copy of this morning that they have been working on in response to the April 24th business special meeting that we had. For you, and they will step us through that pretty specifically. And then I have, at last week's meeting, you instructed me to bring back options for non-compliance, and I have three options to talk about today. Do that after Adrian and Tanya. And then Mike will spend just a little bit of time talking about reopening the courts in the building. So trying to cover a lot of topics under one broad agenda item here. So Adrian?
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Adrian. How are you?
Good morning and well. Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health, Adrian Byrne, Health Director. So as reported by John Hopkins, Kansas has 5,648 cases of COVID-19. And in Sedgwick County, we have a total of 439 cases. KDHE reports that more than 5,000 Sedgwick County residents have been tested for COVID-19. And at the Health Department, we've taken samples and tested over 1,500 of those residents. Today, at our drive-through, we have 104 people scheduled, and the service is done at no cost. I didn't do a good enough job in the beginning, really stressing that any sampling that is done through our drive-through is at no cost. There may be at other community centers or hospitals, but at our location at the Health Department, there is no cost at all. If someone has insurance, we take that insurance information to pass it along to the commercial lab that we're, that we're using in the community, Quest. But there is no out-of-pocket for anyone coming through our testing site at any time. We encourage individuals with COVID-19 symptoms to call 211, to be scheduled through Cahill, the lab, through our State Health Department, Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Two symptoms are still required. No longer has to have a fever, but two symptoms through Quest, we are able to establish our own criteria, and there just needs to be one respiratory illness, the fever. But call 211, and they'll walk you through screening, and then pass you along to the Health Department's nurse triage line, where we will get you scheduled for testing. So earlier in the pandemic, we needed, we needed supplies to test. And we still need supplies, but we are in a much better place where we have supplies to test as many as call in every day. I think we've done up to 120 in one day. So we still have testing to be able to test community members who were ill. And if you have one of 12 symptoms, these symptoms keep on being broadened as time goes on, and we learn more about it. Cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, fever, chills, repeated shaking with chills, muscle pain, feeling unwell, headache, sore throat, and then new, they've had some of this at the very beginning because, but it's become more of a symptom with some, is that loss of taste or smell, or diarrhea without an alternative, more likely diagnosis. So testing is really an important tool in workplaces and occupations that are high risk for acquiring or spreading COVID-19. And so because of this, and having more samples, having more supplies to sample, and again, this is no-cost sampling or testing, however you want to refer to it, that we are doing this for any first responder, even if they are asymptomatic. They do not need to have any symptoms in order to be, to go through a drive-through and be tested. Law enforcement, healthcare workers, same with Meat Packing Plant employees. I spoke with an employer yesterday of the Meat Packing Plant here in town. We're four-hundred individuals, and we'll be arranging for all of them to be tested. And the people who work in residential group settings, such as Department of Corrections, residential schools, and group homes. So healthcare workers, including people who work in hospitals, clinics, health homes, hospice, and long-term care facilities, they can be tested weekly if asymptomatic. If there is one resident in a long-term care facility, we are coordinating with a long-term care facility and either going in and providing, testing all the residents ourselves, or working with the facility to help their nurses test. So again, any staff that are working in residential facilities do not need to be symptomatic to go through, because in those residential settings, the residents are pretty locked down. And so, and with long-term care facilities not having visitors still, it's going to be the staff that are more than likely bringing in the virus, whether they're asymptomatic or not. And so that's why it's important to get people tested on a weekly basis. So older adults and people with a weakened immune system may have COVID-19 symptoms different from the more common fever, cough, and shortness of breath. They may not have fever, and what we're finding out may display headache, diarrhea, loss of smell and/or taste, confusion, sore throat, or runny nose. Older adults infected with coronavirus may act differently than normal. They could sleep more, stop walking, lose orientation, or fall. If you recognize these signs in yourself or in a family member, please call your provider and ask about COVID-19. Also dial 211, and we can get you set up for testing. The isolation days have also changed. It was seven days from onset of illness, or three days fever-free and symptom-free, whichever was longer, but it had to be at least seven days. Now that has changed to 10 days. So if someone is ill and being tested, the isolation is 10 days from onset of symptoms, or three days fever and symptom-free, whichever is longest, but a minimum of 10 days. COVID-19 is still a moving target, just as I'm sharing today. There are new things that we've learned since last week. So new information comes in daily, sometimes multiple times a day. And we continue to process and implement changes and have the information as quickly as we can out to the community. That is my update.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Thank you for that update. I would like for you to talk about the type of testing. I had a concerning call from a community member who went to a clinic in town and received an antibody test. She was under the impression that was she was receiving the active viral test, but she did not receive that. So can you talk about the difference between those two?
The antiviral isn't yet totally FDA-approved as far as going through all the rigorous processes. They allow, they allowed several to come onto the market. But what we know is that they are able to detect coronavirus, but there's multiple types of coronavirus. And so the specificity to be able to test, to be able to detect COVID-19 is still in question. I had talked with one of the community clinics that were using the antibody, and at the time, they were doing that in conjunction with normal sampling. And so I'm not, I hadn't heard that there was just that being used. There are companies out there that are really pushing the antibody testing. And I think every week that goes on, those tests are going to get better. We're going to learn more about them and how to analyze those. But at that time, that's not something that we're, that we are recommending at the Health Department to use.
So can you speak to the, how the tests are administered? The difference between the two?
The antibody, I believe, is a, is a blood test. So it's, it's a rapid, where they would take a little bit of blood, and takes about 45 minutes, and it shows whether or not someone has the antibodies built up for coronavirus. But whether or not that is COVID-19 coronavirus is what we're not sure. And even if someone has the antibodies, we don't know yet that that protects them from contracting COVID-19 again.
So if someone, we at the Health Department are doing the nasal swabs?
Yes.
Which is the test that we are conducting?
Correct.
So if a community member goes to a community health clinic, and they don't get a nasal test, you can't be sure that that's the, they're actually testing for that?
Correct.
So I would encourage all members of our community, if they are getting, if they feel like they're getting a COVID test at a community clinic, they need to have a nasal swab done, and not just a finger prick?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. That's, thank you for clarifying. That's a good item that gets confused, I'm sure, with many. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brief question. A month or so ago, when we voted to protect the community, which was the right thing to do at that point in time, one of the things that we were briefed was that the whole goal was to flatten the curve. And as we flatten the curve, the purpose of that was to keep people out of the hospitals and off of ventilators, because we were afraid of overwhelming the hospitals. But the bit of data that we don't get, because we have to still worry about protecting the community right now, today, and one of the pieces of information we would need if we had to go back and ask for more stringent rules, and if you read through the, the public comments that we received, a lot of them were asking to go back to more stringent rules. Two pieces of information that we don't have are the number of people that are in the hospital right now, and the number that are in the hospital on ventilators. And so I don't know how that we can make decisions or to respond to the public comments and so forth, if we don't have that type of information.
And I, I hear that and get a lot of questions about that myself, phone calls and emails. We don't, we, we don't have, I mean, I don't have that information. That is information that the hospitals have, and I believe that, that the manager has been in conversation with them, and I don't know if that's going to be information that is released or not. But, you know, what we know is that the hospitals have, have capacity. They have capacity for COVID-19 patients. They have capacity for other patients, critical or not, that need their services. What I can tell you is that through the Emergency Operations Center and working with our health and medical partners, as we have in the past, in, in the past, when we got close to the place, maybe seven, eight years ago, where we had so many flu cases in the hospitals that were critical and using ventilators, the hospitals alerted us through the EOC that they were getting close to their threshold, where they wanted to talk with community partners and look at possibly diverting to other local, to other hospitals, regional hospitals. So it's not that we're, we're totally blind. It's just that right now, the hospitals are not choosing to release that information to us, but we know they have good capacity. Dr. Minz is in conversation with, with both the hospital CEOs, and hears that they have good capacity. So if they were getting to the place where it was a concern, that would definitely be discussed at the Emergency Operations Center, and we would be working with, with partners to ensure that patients got cared for at some facility, whether or not they could be here, but it is not an issue here currently.
I might comment on that too, Commissioner, real quickly. We've had several conversations with the hospital, and to Commissioner Howell's point, he's been asking for that for two or three, four weeks. And it is, it's a critical component of the measurements as we go forward. Working with the hospital, I think the reason that maybe they're hesitant to give some of that information is it changes hourly within, within the system, and they know that they can't, a number they put out today may be a totally different number than tomorrow. But what they are, I think, willing to give us, because they understand the importance of this measurement device, is some type of range of open ICU, open vents, the amount of patients that's, you're seeing coming in. They could give us some type of range that if it's less than a certain number, less than, say, 30 ICU beds or 30 COVID patients, that all lights are green, and we can continue to move in phases as we, as, as we see fit. If that number gets to maybe between a certain range of 30 to 80, for example, maybe that light goes yellow, and we have to be cautious. And if that number goes above a num, a certain number, let's say it's 80, then all of a sudden, that light turns red, and we then have to take, we have to take pause in where we're at, and maybe come back to this table and talk about blocking in a certain phase for a time, or maybe even regressing. So we're, I'm talking through that with them, for some type of qualitative indicator to us that we can give to this board on a daily or every other daily basis, so you can make proper decisions. So we're working on that, and I, but I understand their hesitancy to give it, because they're managing all patients again now. For example, when we, when I talked with them on Monday, of their total vent patients at Wesley, only a fraction was COVID. They have a number of vent patients just through the normal course of disease management within the hospital. But in our world, it's that total vent capacity and that total ICU capacity that's really critical for us to make decisions going forward, and we'll, we'll try to get you something on that.
Thank you.
And if I could, I'd like to also add, Dr. Minz had made a comment of, earlier in the week or last week, that there were a number of ventilators in use, and at that time, very, it was less than a handful that were on COVID, because people have such anxiety about going to the hospital, that they are waiting until they are in such poor shape, which is really frightening, that they can go right on to a ventilator. So it's so important, the hospitals have taken so many steps to ensure that they're doing everything they need to do to keep people safe. So please don't, if you need to go to the hospital, please go to the hospital. So please don't, if you need to go to the hospital, please go to the hospital.
Good point. Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I think one thing we also need to consider is the fact that we handle surrounding regions' hospitals. So if someone gets, I mean, if there is a hospital in southwest Kansas that's full, where are those patients going to come? They're going to come here. So that's something else that we really need to consider and make sure that we can factor in to those numbers.
Commissioner Howe?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the comments of Commissioner Dennis earlier. I completely agree. That is the most critical data we have to have to make good policy. A lot of the comments I'm reading on the, on the comments here, I think that they, they are not focused on that particular piece of data. They want to stop the spread. And I understand that's certainly a good goal to stop the spread, but I think everybody agrees we're not going to stop the spread, we're going to slow the spread. And the whole purpose was the hospitals. And so that has to continue to be our focus. And so I really appreciate those comments. And Manager Stoltz, I would just like to say, even though they, the numbers do change potentially rapidly, rapidly, I think that having some data, a snapshot in time periodically, maybe not every day, but every few days, would be very useful for us to track the trends. I think a snapshot is needed. I understand they might give you a number, and 10 minutes later, it might change. But I think we need to have a snapshot piece of data for us to, you know, watch the trend line of what's actually happening. Right now, we don't have an idea. I am getting some data from people who are on the other, on the inside of the hospitals, because that's the only way I can get data. And what I'm hearing is they're, they have very few cases in the hospital and very few people on respirators. And even in places like Ford County, where they have a huge number of cases, number of people, you know, getting hospitalization there or ventilators there is actually quite low compared to the number of cases, I understand. So this is the most important thing for us to understand, and I think we have to have a snapshot in time, as much as we possibly can, for us to continue to, I like to use the word throttle, throttle the policy based on what's happening at the hospitals. The whole goal is to make sure we keep under the threshold that allows them to provide services to people who need their help, but at the same time, provide as much freedom and allow the virus to, it's in our community, you know, there are people going to get it. The reality is, we have to make sure we have resources available to them when they come in contact with the virus. That's the, that's why we, that's what we're doing this for. We have to make sure we keep that understood, I guess. So, thank you, Manager. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
You bet. And I believe that, I know that in the Governor's order, she was watching three, closely going to watch three items, the death rate, but the hospitalization rates, and maybe bed space, can't remember what the last third one was. But I know that Dr. Norman, Dr. Lee Norman, is in real direct communication with the hospitals around the state, and so they're, everything that we're kind of wanting, I think, at least at the, at the highest level, but at the Governor's office, she's getting that in a daily basis. Adrian's confirming yes as well. It's stuff that we don't have, but I think there's an element of, of some direct communication on availability and death rate and hospitalization and conversion of ICU beds, if the COVID area is too full, how many ICU bedrooms are available to convert to COVID. So it's a, it's a, looked to me like it's probably a formula that we're not, we don't get privy to, but there is one out there at a high level. So maybe we can plead again with them to, to release some information or a range of information, so.
And Chairman, if you don't mind, I still want to ask you again, I think we ought to have two charts out there that I still can't seem to get my hands on. I can calculate the numbers, I get that. But I think we ought to be, ought to be more available to everyone to see it more often. But we ought to be tracking active cases. So you take the number of cases we've identified through positive testing and subtract out those that are recovered, or in some cases, a few that died. And that, if I understand correctly, based on what you told me last week, that's the number of active cases. That's the number we ought to be looking at for Sedgwick County. And there was one other piece of data, that is, I just lost it just now, but.
Commissioner.
Commissioner, I might just mention also, we're going to try to get you multiple points of data to make good decisions in the future on public policy. And it's more than, I think it's maybe even more than what the Governor was suggesting. We're going to have five or six data points. And any other data points that this commission asks for, we'll try our best to get those and provide them to you on daily or weekly basis so that you can make good policy decisions as we, as we coexist now with the virus over the next several months. And so we are, we are working on that, I have a team working on that within Mike Elper's shop, and working in conjunction with Adrian to create really solid data points, which give us indicators or begin to give us red flags or show that everything's well. And it's a, it's five or six different data points right now. And any other data point that any commissioner wants, we will surely try to be inclusive of that.
The other one, I forgot just a minute ago, I just remember what it was, though. But the other thing we ought to be tracking is the number of positive cases relevant to the number of tests given. So I know the number of tests given is going up, and that's a great thing.
We do that.
But the number of positives from the total number of tests given ought to be a ratio. We ought to be able to chart that out as well. So I kind of envision, if you will, an Excel spreadsheet, a matrix, if you will, with all the various things we're trying to track on a daily basis, we just populate that sheet every single day and make that available to anybody that would want that. That'd be, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
I have another question.
Yeah, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. So I would like to address the additional testing sites and also mobile testing. On the COC call last week, we talked about some folks in the homeless community maybe not getting to a testing site if they were to, they needed to have a test. Also, all of us commissioners received a letter from the African-American Council of Elders. I know that you received it as well. And I just want to make sure that we, can we have a discussion about the Ninth Street location and additional locations in our community? Where are we at with that?
Well, we've talked more about that this week, and knowing that I haven't done an adequate job with really ensuring that people know that there's no cost whatsoever, because that's come up in the last week or so, to alert me that we needed to do a better job of communicating that there is no cost whatsoever. And we haven't heard that anyone isn't able to get there. We have a whole lot of capacity at West Central. If someone were to call 211 and they said that they didn't have transportation to West Central, then we would problem solve with them and whatever, and do whatever it needed to, do what it took to either get them to West Central. We do, we have done sampling at East Ninth on a very low level, even before we began the drive-through at West Central. So that is still like an emergency option if someone, for some reason, can't get to West Central, but we would ensure that they get there, whether they are homeless and picked up and driven, or there's a multitude of options that we would have. So at this point, we really haven't heard that people can't get that, can't get there. We haven't heard that from 211 or from people reaching out to the Health Department. If that, if that is a clear issue, then absolutely that would be, we would look at options to reduce that around our community, whether it meant mobile or expanding East Ninth.
And I might jump in here, Commissioner, Tim Kaufman's presentation coming up next. We will get into a deep dive of testing, so if we could maybe hold those questions for just a second, I think Tim would be, would be addressing those, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. All right, Adrian, thank you. Thank you for your update. Good luck. Have a successful week, let's hope.
You're welcome. You're not quite done with me yet.
Oh, okay. Can't wait.
So do I, okay, so you're going to come next, and then I'm going to give the, okay. I'll be back.
You'll be back. Tim, welcome to the commission meeting. Thank you for the updates you're going to provide.
Thank you. It's great to be here. Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager. Since last, our meeting last week, the Health Department ran their drive-through local collection site five times, served 538 people over those five days. We have the capacity at West Central to sample a much greater number of individuals. And so just as Adrian did, I'd like to encourage anyone in the community that, if they're not feeling well, to please call 211 and discuss if they're appropriate for sampling. And again, that test is offered to them at no cost. Our current inventory of sampling kits this morning is 4,182. Still have over 17,000 swabs on order, and we continue to make requests of the state and place orders with private vendors as well. We need to see that our supply of testing kits remains stable and supplies continue to come in at the rate that we use them. If we can do that for a few consecutive weeks, I think that we're in a position where we would consider a more broad sampling of asymptomatic individuals across the community selected randomly in an effort to get a better understanding of the spread of the virus in the community. I've mentioned 211 already. The majority of 211 referrals go to the Health Department nurse triage line for further assessment. They work with those patients regarding location preference and may refer them to one of the safety net clinics that also provide testing. Health Department is doing somewhere between 25 and 30% of all of the sampling in Sedgwick County, but samples are collected at a number of locations across the community. The Sedgwick County website has a testing site locator to help individuals find the nearest location for them as well. We've also, we work with a number of great partners in the community, and one of those partners is the Health Core Clinic, and they are located in the 67219 zip code, I believe, very close to 214. But they have a mobile capability that they're starting to roll out, and so they're able to not only target different parts of the community, but they'll be able to respond to other needs as they're identified and go to those. And that allows us to focus, to continue to focus on a high-volume testing site on West Central. We can certainly run more than, we can probably run 300 a day through that site if we've got individuals identified and scheduled and ready to go. So we want to focus on that West Central site to be able to get folks through there quickly, and then we want to partner with other providers that are also doing tests as well. There was a question earlier about antibody testing. Health Department staff continue to research additional testing opportunities. The FDA has allowed antibody testing on an emergency authorization basis, but on Monday, they, there are, I think, 10 different antibody tests right now that have been granted that emergency authorization. On Monday, the FDA indicated to all of those providers that they need to have demonstrated data that proves efficacy of their tests and accuracy of their tests within 10 days, or they're going to need to pull them off of the market. So the antibody testing holds a great deal of promise in the future in terms of helping us understand the disease and its spread, but right now, we just don't have enough confidence in the reliability and the accuracy of the data. So that's why the Health Department chooses not to use that antibody test and rather do the DNA test. And once that antibody test becomes more reliable and more available, I'm sure that we'll use that as well to help us understand the spread of the disease in the community. I'd be happy to answer any other questions. You asked most of the really good questions while Adrian was here instead of me, but if you've got any others, I'd be glad to answer them.
Tim, we can, so tell me, did you say that we, today, we have 4,000, about 200 test kits available?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we continue to increase our testing? We're over 100 a day now, which our target was at least 100, and we're there for the last week?
Yeah, we'd really like to get to 200 or greater if we could.
Okay. So our new target is now 200 a day?
It is, yes.
Okay. So with 200 a day, and we've got test kits coming in, and we've got test kits in stock.
Yes.
So, and according to Adrian, we've not had any, hardly any people saying, I can't get tested yet. So the, any expansion of testing between all the people that are doing it, what is your advice to us at this point?
Again, right now, I think for us, it makes the most sense to focus on that West Central site, because that's our opportunity to do a high volume, because we've got three lanes of traffic, we've got multiple testers, we're able to do multiple folks at a time. That would be our preference. And as I mentioned, we've got partners in the community that are doing testing as well. Not only geographically diverse, but now we've got one of our partners that's ready to do some mobile testing as well. So I think that may meet some of the more niche needs that are out, the smaller pockets across the community, and then we're going to continue to try and run everybody through that high-volume drive-through that we have.
Thanks. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. Just for clarity, the 538 last week, that was at, that was all at the West Central location, is that correct?
Yes.
And the 4182 number of tests on hand, that's in our own possession, that's Sedgwick County test kits, that's not counting the other test sites?
That is correct.
And the number of positive cases, though, that is not just our testing, that's all test sites collecting together, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I think that we saw a map last week that showed us where the test sites were. I think there, if I remember correctly, I think there were seven different test sites?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay. Is there any of them open on Saturday or Sunday?
I am, I will verify and get back to you on that. I know that there are some, some of them are at Ascension Clinics, and they, so they may be open on Saturdays, and the others are going to be either Health Department, the Health Department location, or at one of the FQHCs. I think they're right now concentrating on Monday through Friday, but I'll verify that for you.
If we have any, any information that anybody that needs to be tested, was not able to be tested because of transportation problems?
We're not aware of that right now. And again, we've got that nurse triage line that helps if they get, if 211 does not pass them on to another location that may be closer to them and passes them on to the nurse triage line at the Health Department, those folks are going to try and help problem solve that transportation issue with them.
So with the three lines of traffic going in through the West Central center there, how many hours per day, I assume you try to schedule these close together, so they're trying to get it start and stop, but kind of as quickly as possible to get through all the number of people that need to be tested? About how much time per day does that take to get through that?
Right now, it's taking about three to three and a half hours generally, depending on the flow. We could test up to six hours. Rarely do we need to do something like that. We try and schedule in bunches, it's called wave scheduling, and so we have a number of people come at about on the quarter hour, and then we can run them through.
Well, with the high number of tests that we have on hand and all of that, what's keeping us from starting the randomized asymptomatic community testing? Why, what's going to get that started?
Well, we just, we've had, we've, we had 4,000 last week based on a large shipment that came in Tuesday night. We've used some, we've had more come in. I'd like to see another week or two, and then it's going to take some time to get the process pulled together, because we would really like to do a truly randomized test. I think that with some scientific help from others in the community, we'll be able to potentially do that by the end of the month.
Even if we just did, like, say, 500 tests or something for the community, that would give us quite a bit, quite a bit of information about what's going on in our community. So I understand, you know, with, at the rate we have right now, that's, that's, the rate we're going right now, that's over a month's worth of test kits, and I think we need to have the data as soon as possible. So I guess I would encourage us to sector off 500 test kits and see if we can at least get, get that done. That'd be very useful information if we could do that.
It absolutely would. We'd like, I'll certainly talk to Health Department folks about doing that, accelerating the timeline on that. We'd like to be able to do it at intervals, so do, do a randomized test in two or three weeks, and then two or three weeks after that, do another one to see if we're seeing differences in the community. But I'll talk to them about accelerating the timeline.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. How much does it cost to run that testing site?
I don't have that data for you. I could, we could calculate that, figure out what kind of, what type of staff labor we've got involved for that.
Okay. I'd like to know that. You know, I think it's, the example I gave earlier about the woman who was given the antibody test at one of our safety net clinics here in town is an African-American. She was only given the nasal swab test because she called me and I told her to call 211, and she got a test from the Health Department. So I wonder how many people aren't calling or going to a safety net clinic and not actually getting the test, the nasal swab test? We don't know that unless they contact and tell us. Also, how many people might be staying at home because of lack of transportation, and they just don't want to tell somebody they don't have transportation? Or they're a single parent who has multiple children, who doesn't want to put them on a bus, take them to East, West Central? So I guess, you know, there, it's evident, and I'll just read a couple of sentences here. "It's evident by most metrics that the African-American community is more vulnerable to the negative impacts of coronavirus due to the prevalent health conditions African-Americans face." So the East Ninth location isn't just for the African-Americans. So, the East 9th location isn't just for the African-American community, but it's another location that we could have for our entire community and why wouldn't we set something up to make it more convenient if testing is one of the things that we need to do? So, that's, that's the questions that I'm asking and I just, I feel like, you know, each week we come here and we say, I just don't understand why we wouldn't make it more convenient for every single person in our community, east or west, white or black, to get a test. If we have the funds to do it, why can't we do that?
I would agree with you. We're trying, we're trying to increase testing across the community as well and as I mentioned, we do about 25 to 30% of the tests in the community. It's a community-wide effort to do that and one of the things that I'm most encouraged by was the indication that Health Core is ready to ramp up and do some mobile testing. The intensity of the labor required to do a mobile test versus what we can do through a drive-through test is pretty different and we know that we can't test the entire community. We have to rely on our partners and so with Health Core in this position to be able to start to do some additional testing on a mobile basis and they've indicated an interest in going into 67214 as well, I'd kind of like to see how that works. And if we're still not reaching the community, if the African-American community believes they're not being reached, we'd certainly talk about doing some additional work with our other partners or with other, our other locations. We're absolutely interested in increasing the volume of testing. And my other comment would be that if an individual, best practice is if you're using the antibody test, if you identify, because it's, the antibody test does not tell you if you actively have the virus and so anybody who tests positive, it's a, it's a quick turnaround test, is supposed to be tested with the nasal swab as well to confirm whether or not they have that test. I would hope that whatever clinic that that individual went to is following that practice, my belief based on their experience is they had the antibody test and it came back negative.
So, since we don't have a lot of data, I mean, they could, they could still have COVID and test negative, but the antibody test?
They could.
Okay. Well, I think, will you be addressing personal protective equipment? Probably Rusty's going to do that.
Rusty's going to do that, yeah.
Okay. So, that's, that's another question. I guess I just want to make sure that there are some people, you know, if you don't have transportation and you go to the West Central location, you just walk through the line and then what happens once you're waiting for transportation? Do you, do you wait inside? Do you wait by the side of the road? Like, where do you wait? If you, you know, let's say if somebody with kids has to go to the West Central location to get tested, where's a safe place for them to wait?
Well, we'd identify someplace within the facility for them to wait.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all for now.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Yeah, Tim, appreciate your answers. Appreciated the opportunity to talk on the phone yesterday about a second site because I think if we're, if we're looking at serving the entire community, we also need to be looking at South Wichita as well. And so, before we decide on what a second location's, where that might be, I think we need to take the whole community into context as well and not forget those of us on the south side of town. So, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Tim. Appreciate the update. It's kind of encouraging news. Thank you. Okay, next up, I think Rusty, is that right? Okay. Rusty, we're getting you set up here, buddy. Rusty, are you, can you hear us? Speak up.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Volume up on the phone.
Our volume?
Yeah.
Or? Volume up.
Can you hear me?
I think so, but hold on. We're trying to increase the volume. Thank you.
Okay.
Hold on. Test again.
Testing?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, really good. Thank you.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I will give you a brief update on the Emergency Operations Center specifically related to supplies, protective equipment. So, just as a matter of perspective, we received our weekly reports from the agencies that participate, that are eligible and participate through the EOC for supplies. Yesterday, we received 142 submissions. On average, we receive about 124. Some weeks, we have some agencies that don't report. They seemingly have enough on hand and then whenever they start to feel like they're low, they report. So, yesterday, we had 142 agencies reporting. Just a snapshot for one day to give you a little perspective, our logistics group filled 15 orders yesterday, sending out just shy of 12,000 items. And on the same, during that same timeframe, we received a small shipment of a couple of different things which amounted to just about 1,300 items. So, our logistics group is doing a great job of balancing and ensuring that we maintain supplies on hand so that we can fill those emergency orders for agencies that are getting low on something to keep them going for a few more days or maybe a week. It's important that we continue to have steady supplies coming in through orders and purchases and through donations so that we maintain enough supply on hand to fill those emergency orders. Generally speaking, across the, across the system, for those 142 agencies that reported yesterday, we generally seem to be doing pretty well collectively. There appears to be, on average, about three to four weeks of supply on hand across all of those agencies, again collectively. There are certain agencies that have more than others and that's what the EOC warehouse, that's the purpose that it serves is we get several that are getting very low on something, we'll infuse them with enough to keep them going for a little while until they can either make some acquisitions on their own or until we get more supply in. And we've done, our logistics group have done a great job over the past several weeks of maintaining that balance and ensuring that none of our partners out there are without. With that said, we are starting to get some phone calls from what you would, what would have been classified as nonessential businesses during the shutdown, during the stay-at-home order. They were, they were businesses that provide some degree or some type of medical service, but they were not emergent and they were deemed nonessential, so they shut down and were not operational. We're beginning to get some calls into the EOC from some of those saying, "Hey, we're looking to reopen and we need supplies, we need masks, we need..." At this time, we really aren't able to start increasing the number of entities that we serve. They were nonessential, non-emergent before. We're staying with the group that we've been serving because they continue to be the emergent, necessary businesses and these others currently are encouraging them to try to acquire on their own and/or to work through the process that the Chamber has set up to help businesses reopen because we can't take on 20 or 30 or 40 more, what were deemed nonessential businesses to supply them with the limited resources that we have so that they can open up and do those types of procedures that, you know, are generally optional, they're not something that's emergent. So, I just want you to be aware of that. Next thing is, I talked last week about a decontamination or sterilization process for N95 masks. That system is now getting to the point that it's going to be operational in Topeka and we do have a site in Sedgwick County. The Sheriff's Department graciously supplied personnel to manage that operation and after this afternoon, we will be receiving our first drop-off from various agencies at that location here in Sedgwick County so that the Batel Group that is providing the service in Topeka can pick those up and transport them to Topeka, get them sanitized and back. Generally, it's about a 48-hour turnaround is my understanding. So, that resource is up. Most of the, most of the partners that have high volume are signing up and getting involved in that process so that they can conserve and reuse some of those materials as is appropriate. So, that, that service is coming online this week. And then finally, I'll very briefly touch on this and Tanya may have more to speak to this later on, but internally, we obviously have to start thinking about our departments and our employees as we start to reopen maybe around Memorial Day or after. And so, we are getting processes in place to ensure that our departments have the supplies that they need. We don't want to commingle that with the EOC because the EOC is the broader group that's serving not just Sedgwick County, but serving all entities across the county. But, we are setting up a process that includes personnel who will coordinate to ensure that as purchasing is working to make acquisitions, that we aren't competing with ourselves internally or competing against the EOC. So, we're coordinating all that so that we can try to acquire all the stuff we need, not just for the EOC and all the partners there, but for our county employees in a way that, you know, is helpful and not competing against, we're not competing against ourselves internally. So, that's kind of what's going on with the EOC supply-wise and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis has a question.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you've mentioned a number of times in your discussion, the EOC is really key to what our operations are moving forward and I guess my concern is who is going to be leading the EOC here in the near future with Carl Link leaving and I understand his deputy is on loan from Fire District Number One, so where are we going with leadership of the EOC?
Well, sir, I will continue to provide some oversight and we will continue to use our temporary deputy in there to provide some oversight. Our fire departments have that instant command knowledge and understanding of how to, you know, how that works and so they are a great partner. We're in the process of hiring a new deputy and we will be working to hire a new director as well, but currently, myself and the EOC partners, the Sedgwick County Fire Department, we will continue to make sure that that thing runs the way it should and that we are continuing to be in contact with the state and with all of our partners and we'll run it seamlessly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. You talked about businesses acquiring PPE, but what about individual citizens? Are we offering any, anything to individual citizens who might not be able to afford a mask or how are we handling that?
Currently, the, currently, the Emergency Operations Center is not providing those types of services to individual citizens. I know that there are organizations, nonprofits and others who are, I've seen, I've not had direct interaction with them, but I know that there are some, some resources out there for those types of supplies. I know that certain public safety entities have had donations made to them that they turned around and, and shared with the public. So, currently, currently, the county and the EOC are not providing that service. We did provide information to the Community COVID Task Force on vendors who can supply cloth masks and that's really where we are right now. Ma'am, we are not, we are not supplying or serving individual citizens at this point.
Will we get an overview in Item F about kind of what we're, what we're spending things on? And how that's propped up to?
Well, a couple of things. There is a, in the COVID Task Force, which is a community-driven task force made up of businesses and other community leaders, they are addressing this issue of PPEs for businesses and citizens so that we, the county, can stay focused on emergency operations. So, that's number one. Number two, under the CARES Act, and I'm going to stay pretty high on that today, but there, that can be discussed. I think that over the next few weeks, as the CARES Act becomes more defined and as we prop up our system to manage it, this commission will be charged with many policy decisions on, on how that money is to be spent. So, I, I think that, and we learn more about CARES every day, it's kind of evolving, much like everything else with COVID. How that money can be spent, I think it could be possible that if it is the Board of Health's will, that there could be some dollars thrown at that, but that is for another day and a discussion and we need more research on that before we can make that commit.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Rusty, thank you. Appreciate the update and thanks for continuing to run down the equipments and thanks to the community for all the people that are donating items. Much appreciated. So, with that, we will move on. Based on timing, we switch the schedule around, maybe, maybe, eight, 10 minutes, maybe Mike, is Mike's report an easy one?
We can go in sequence. It might be good because I think once Adrian and Tanya get going, that's going to be a half hour probably, so.
Do we have to receive and file yet? Are we receiving and filing the whole?
I'm moved that we receive and file.
A second.
Okay. Move to receive and file.
Item D.
Item D. Okay.
I think, I think, Chairman, it is a good idea to maybe have Mr. Papoon talk about reopening of courts. It's kind of a straggler out there and then after break, we can then have Adrian and Tanya go. Probably a good move.
Okay. So, we're going to receive a motion in a second to receive and file Item D from these first three reports that we have. Questions?
Yes, we received a document today that Recovery Plan, 35-page document. Are we going to be talking about this at some point? Is this during this agenda item or some other time during today's meeting?
That is what Adrian and Tanya are going to be talking through.
All right. Thank you.
Motion in a second. Madam Kirk?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Madam Kirk, next item or as a substitute item now? Do we have mics?
I think it's all part of the one item.
All part of B, sir.
It was all part of D?
Yeah.
Okay, so we still have more?
Oh, I'm sorry, D.
That's what I was wondering. We have more of D.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning, Mike.
Good thing lawyers can always be brief and squeeze them in, but just wanted to get back with all of you. Last week, you asked us to check in with the courts and see what they were doing about reopening. Friday evening, Justice Lukert, Chief Justice Lukert, Kansas Supreme Court issued a number of orders about, for the courts and how they can reopen. Couple of orders we've been looking at. One order, 2020 PR-049 deals with what the courts are supposed to do when the courthouses are closed, which is basically our current situation. And of course, they have a number of functions that they have to do and have been continuing to do even with the courthouse closed and under the circumstances we're dealing with now. The other order, 2020 PR-048 is the process and procedures they are supposed to use once the courthouse is open. County manager on Monday, this past Monday afternoon, set up a meeting with Judge Garing, our chief justice, or chief judge of the 18th Judicial District in Ellen House, and we had a nice meeting with them about Justice Lukert's order for when they'll reopen and some of the things that they'll have to do to be up and operating again. And actually, there are a number of hurdles and obstacles that they have to deal with prior to being able to open up again, including screening everybody coming into the courtrooms, into the courthouse, some kind of screening process. They need to have suitable, suitable PPE and sanitation equipment because they have to sanitize the courtroom after every hearing. They cannot have any more than 10 people in a hearing, so that's going to rule out jury trials or it's going to make it difficult to do in the courtrooms that they have right now. And so, they're going to have to deal with those kinds of processes and which kinds of hearings they can have under those circumstances. And the main thing in the order is that, is that the Chief Judge, Judge Garing, is going to have to coordinate with the health, public health officer and our Health Department to coordinate all this, including whatever physical or architectural barriers may be needed for them to be able to re-operate the court system. I think the manager has directed Tanya Cole to look at some of the facility issues that they're going to be dealing with, sanitizing the courtrooms, having them ready to go, any modifications that need to be made to the courtrooms. And I think he's directed Mr. Kaufman to work with the court system on the, coordinating with Dr. Minz on the issues that... modifications that need to be made to the courtrooms. And I think he's directed Mr. Kaufman to work with the court system on the, coordinating with Dr. Minns on the issues that, that Judge Garing will have, and making sure that he's keeping the public in the courtrooms safe and operation. But that's where they are, and I think it's safe to say, because of all of these things that need to be done in the next few weeks, it would probably be the court's recommendation that we not open the courthouse fully for the public until they're ready to operate under this latest order by the Supreme Court. So I don't, I don't know what we're talking about now. I'm sure we'll have further reports from people like Tanya and, and Mr. Kaufman to deal with how soon we can, from our end, get them up and operating, and we'll be coordinating very closely with Ellen and Judge Garing for when they're comfortable about opening up the courts. Happy to answer any questions regarding that.
Okay, so this is kind of a little bit out of our, out of our control, except the courts and the, and the law to determine how they're going to do this?
We're more in a, a helpful role in this, in this situation, Mr. Chairman. The Chief Justice has set out very specific guidelines for how the courts can operate, even when the courthouses are open and when there's no stay-at-home order in a particular city or county. So they have to follow those guidelines, but we certainly are in a strong support role with the courts on this.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner?
Just, yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you for the presentation. I'm curious about things like marriage licensing. I mean, there was, there was a time there that you couldn't even do that here in the courthouse. Is that going to be opened back up? You can now.
I'll, I'll have to check in on that. I mean, the, the things that they're dealing with, I looked at the order that they deal with from the Supreme Court on operating in a courthouse that's closed. I mean, they have probable cause determinations to be made, they have children in need of care, they have juvenile determinations that have to be made that are all very timely. They have, you know, all of these things. I don't know that marriage license is probably as paramount right now as some of these other issues that they're having to deal with, but I'll be happy to talk to Judge Garing and give advice.
I guess what I would say is, I understand the jury trial issue. That's, that's a very unique challenge to figure out, but a lot of these things they're doing are not large groups, and, and so I guess it'd be nice to go through and have a list of all those various things that the courts are doing, you know, the PFAs, for example. I, I know there's a lot of things that have to be done. Be nice to have those things addressed and say, these are the, what kind of the current status of these different types of activities, activities that might happen in the courthouse. And I think in terms of the clerk, the deeds, and the treasurer's office, they're all operating normally as of right now. Is that correct? And they're inside the courthouse. I just want to make sure, if someone comes in and wants to pay their property taxes today, they can get in and make that payment?
The manager may want to address that question, but I-
Not to walk in traffic.
I'm sorry, sir.
Not to walk in traffic.
Treasurer's office to pay your taxes?
Question had, had to do with what county offices are open right now to the public, like clerk or treasurer, and that's-
Well, none of them are as of yet. We're, we're having a meeting, today's Wednesday, tomorrow, with all department head and elected row offices to determine how they want to open, what they need to open, and we'll move forward from there. But as of now, it's very limited on what is coming into the building.
Okay. Are they doing, you said by appointment only, so how do they set up an appointment if they have to?
Call.
If they want to come in and pay their property taxes, they have to make an appointment?
No, I believe they can-
There's a drop box out front.
There, there is a drop off, and they can call if they have questions or if they want an appointment, they can call ahead and get an appointment.
Okay. These are the types of things. I think that the, there ought to be a place for someone to go and, and read, if you will, the details as to what's happening in each one of these different functions. I mean, it is, even, even when us in this room, we're all apparently not in total agreement exactly where we are right now, so I think it needs to be more clearly communicated to the public, certainly, that where, what are the options for these different various things? We, we're not doing a great job of communication on this part. My opinion, we could do a little bit better. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What, what I think would be helpful if we did get some type of frequently asked questions page on our website, because the reason I know things like marriage licenses are open is because I had a constituent call, I need one, so Judge Journey helped me get that organized. The reason I know that we only have a drop box in the treasurer's office that are open is because I had a constituent call me yesterday that wanted to come and bring a check in. So I think we, we are learning as we're going on this, but it would be nice to have that all in one centralized location, or even just some type of helpline that if people want to go to our website, or our Facebook page, or just the number, they can call and get a simple question. But we can't get that unless the treasurer's office, registered deeds office, the courts, you know, sheriff's department, all of our different departments have that information available and in one place. I would love to see that done, but it is amazing what you can learn just by getting calls from constituents, how, how all of our agencies are adapting very, very well on a short amount of time, because I, I was shocked, but I had a constituent whose father was diagnosed with very problematic cancer, stage four metastatic. They wanted to hurry up and get a, their wedding done before he passes away, and they were able to, they, they were able to work with him. So kudos to our court system because I think they understand there are some time pressing issues for a wedding that might not seem as important until you realize there's limited time for some of the participants. So anyway, thanks to all them and all of our elected partners, and I'll shut up because it's almost 10:20.
Okay. Without any more questions, we will recess for, it's 10:15, 10:20. We will recess until 10:45, and we will return at 10:45.
Still on item D, Chairman.
Okay, it's kind of what I thought last time, but it's all right. Okay, welcome back, everybody from the recess. We did go out and witness the flyover. It was hard to see. Commissioner Dennis and I could see it going down 135. And we saw that the tankers were coming through, followed by Doc. Doc was pedaling away to keep up with the tankers. But you got anything to say, or had we saw that?
No, I want to thank McConnell and friends of Doc for recognizing our first responders and for recognizing our healthcare professionals. That was fantastic. And a number of folks did stay out front after we saw them go down 135. And I do appreciate the fact that they came back over a second time, back over the courthouse almost, to, again, recognizing the folks that are serving our community every day. Thanks very much for it. And thanks to all the military men and women that serve our country. I appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, all right. So we will continue on with another portion of item D, which is, which is, I think you had Tanya and Adrian.
COVID update, right? So this next presentation, Chairman and Commission, kind of stems from the special meeting conversation that the Commission had on April 24th with the Chamber and some other area business leaders. And they asked for three things that day. One was to, for the county to develop a, you know, a clear-to-read, common sense set of guidelines or best practices summary document. They also wanted specifics on how we were going to measure infection rates and how we're going to measure how to implement certain policies depending on the infection. So this presentation today is to address those two issues that we were asked for on that date. I think we are viewing these as guidelines. And Adrian will cover the first section, and then Tanya will get into a little bit of detail of the plan. So Adrian.
Good, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Byrne, Health Director. And I'd like to start out by thanking Aaron Davis with the Community Engagement Institute, Dr. Mintz, and Chris Stewart. We began working on a recovery plan document early in April. And then it's been modified since the governor came out with her plan. And then Tanya will talk about the group that she got together that were, that very quickly contacted businesses to review best practices and hear some of their thoughts about the recommendations. So this is our recovery plan. And the next page, it's just a page of contents. And part of the purpose of sharing the recovery plan that we had been working on, even though the governor has come out with her plan, is that we have continued to hear anxiety from some of the community about opening up under the looser restrictions that the governor has. And they've asked for public health guidelines, as well as hearing their own best practice recommendations for their industry. So Phase 1 is loosening restrictions. And in the beginning, we were going to have a four-stage plan, where the current phase we were in was Phase 1. But this has been aligned to be in alignment with the governors as far as Phase 1 being what we are currently in, which is the loosening of the restrictions and the businesses beginning to return in a safe manner. And then Phase 2 is lifting of most restrictions with increased monitoring, or really continued monitoring that we'll be doing in the community. And then Phase 3 is establishing and implementing protections. And Phase 3 really will be in alignment when there is a vaccine that is developed. And then if the governor has a phase out, where after vaccines created and everyone has been vaccinated, that we will return to a, I'm not sure, normal, but a new normal.
Mr. Chairman, do you want us to ask questions as we go, or save it to the end?
Maybe, being at 31 pages, maybe it's easier to ask as we go.
Well, just on that last thing you just talked about, Phase Three, as listed on the sheet here, this reminds me of the, of the four-phase plan you presented about two, three weeks ago.
Yes.
And you mentioned that that time, the Phase Four would be dependent, if you will, on a vaccination as well. But I noticed that words, it's missing a word here. It should say such as the availability of a vaccination. We don't, we don't know for right now for sure there will be a vaccination at this point. So, again, if the, if the COVID-19 is under control and subsiding in the community, that also would be a trigger, if you will, for getting to the end of this phase plan. Would that be correct?
You know, it is still a moving target. And so there, there is a lot that we learn every day. So in regards to Phase Three, even though that could be as soon as six to eight weeks, there's a lot that we could know prior to that point. So the, the belief has been, there are scientists working on it all over the country and world to develop a vaccine. So the plan at this point is that there will be one sometime in 2021. And we'll continue to share news as that comes out.
So just to actually understand, if and when this is, if and when COVID-19 is, is under control and is no longer threatening, if you will, threatening the community as a whole, as it does right now, I don't know, I'm hearing that the vaccination, if we get one, is probably going to be six to 18 months in the future. We don't know when. It could be, it could be a year and a half, it could be never, we don't know. So are you, are you saying that we're going to have some type of government control and government mandates, if you will, until we have that vaccination?
Well, and at, at this point, it, it would probably be in the next 12 months at the latest. But if we got to the place where we weren't seeing any cases, and particularly, because I know there's, there's also companies working on antiviral drugs, like there, there is for the flu, where someone becomes ill and they prescribe the Tamiflu or other antiviral drug, then it lessens the severity and duration greatly. So that is, that is also something that is, that is being worked on currently. So if, if things changed and some, and it almost disappeared out of our community, then were there, we weren't seeing clusters and the cases were continually going down, then at that time, we would reassess, because there's nothing written in stone with COVID-19. This has just been, this is based on CDC's plan, that the White House's plan, and other plans around our community that have been looking at, at that final phase connected with some sort of medication or vaccine. But no, there's nothing written in stone.
So again, I could just read the last sentence, it should say such as the availability of vaccination for COVID-19. This is a, this is one example of how we would get through the end of this phase plan.
Yes.
And so, again, because last time it was presented, it was, it was as if that was the only option, which created a national news story. And I just want to be really clear, this is, that's just one way to get to the end. There may be other ways as well. All right.
There could be, and it continues to evolve.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So the gating criteria, we talked a little bit about, I guess, a week or so ago, are four gating criteria, and that we're, will be looking at and are trending in the right direction in the next 14-day period. The cases and the case and disease investigation, the number of positive cases and the percentage of total cases are, and tests are important. The number of positive cases may be influenced by the number of people tested, as well as the number and size of clusters. So this information is, is important when we are interpreting trends over time. So, for example, if we, if the trends were going downward and we had one spike because of a cluster, that wouldn't necessarily be a determining factor in not moving to an additional, moving to the next phase. So there's a number of data points that are, that are considered when looking at the case and disease investigations. Symptom monitoring, so it's important, we currently, through the Health Department, monitor certain symptoms and illnesses through our emergency departments and EMS. And we always do that as far as surveillance in the community to see when influenza-like illnesses, for example, are beginning to show up in the emergency rooms and other contagious diseases. And so that is part of now the symptom monitoring that we're going to be doing, that we're doing through the emergency departments and other medical visits, looking at the percentage, the amount of respiratory type illnesses, COVID-19 symptoms that are coming through. Excuse me. So this information adds a community dimension that helps interpret the data and is a very important part of it. The, and we are also looking at developing an employer-reported data portal. We have a reportable data portal that we use with our schools, USD 259. And it's a voluntary reporting process. There are a number of school nurses that report the number of students absent each day, and that helps us give a picture of what might be going on in the community. And so we're looking at doing the same thing with our business community, where they would have the option of reporting number of employees ill and number of employees present that day. And there's more to come on that. The healthcare system capacity, which has been a large part of this discussion, is ensuring that the hospitals have the capacity to not only treat COVID-19 cases, but any chronic or critical case that they would need to be, services needing to be provided to the community. And then the personal protective equipment that Rusty speaks of every week is just ensuring that the medical community, our first responders, people that are dealing with ill people and potentially COVID individuals have that PPE. And that personal protective equipment is, particularly masks, are important also for our residents and our residents that are more at risk because of being over 60 with chronic conditions, such as heart disease, or diabetes, or lung disease, high blood pressure, and anyone with a compromised immune system, it's going to be important for them to wear a mask. So the guidance through CDC and our state Health Department and locally is for residents to wear cloth masks. I've heard of a lot of family members and neighbors that are just making cloth masks and distributing them. And it sounds like there's more community organizations that are also doing that, that will be providing more information about, to our community members. So those, that's the gating criteria that is, that is looked at and continues to be monitored really daily. But to move into the next phase, there'll need to be a trend in the right direction with all four of those to then move into Phase Two. If there's a 14-day period that, where that is the case, then Phase Two is entered. If there's not, there has to be a 14-day period. So that 14-day period could take three weeks, four weeks, five weeks. It just depends upon what we see occurring in our community, because we don't want to move too quickly into any phase, because that could, if that increased cases and we weren't on the right downhill trend, then that could have us moving back into the phase before. So primary, I'll be covering primary individual and business guidelines moving forward, like best practices. So the primary individual, it's really what we've been doing and talking about, really understanding how the virus spreads, allergies and postnasal. And so understanding how the virus spreads, and we know that it spreads through droplets, and that you're more at risk if you're within six feet from someone that has been ill for longer than, than 10 minutes. Research is still being done as to how, just how far the virus does spread. Some have said up to 10 feet. Some more information is continuing to come out about that. But just knowing that in ever to be, in order to be considered a close contact of anyone that is ever diagnosed by a lab of being positive for COVID-19, that person needs to be within six feet for over 10 minutes to be considered a close contact, who would then be quarantined. So washing hands often and thoroughly, so not doing, not washing our hands quickly is sometimes what we can do, but really taking the time to wash between our fingers and under our fingernails. And even if you're saying happy birthday extremely quick, quickly, do it twice. And, thank you. And keep, if I'm known for one thing, if it can be saying, keep the fingers away from the eyes, nose, and mouth, because that is, we know that that is a large, that is a big way that the virus is spread. Because even if we're, we're talking, sometimes when people talk, there can be the spittle that comes out. And, but particularly if someone's sneezing or coughing, that burst, those, you know, that then, those droplets that then go. But when we sneeze or cough, it goes into the air, and any surface that's around that is going to land on. And depending upon the material can last several hours plus some. And so it is spread largely, not exclusively for sure, but largely through touching that surface and then not washing our hands and putting our fingers in our eyes, nose, or mouth. So it's very important to, to continue to change that behavior. I know I've, I'm doing much better with that behavior, and I've heard that it really has helped others to keep their fingers out of their eyes. So staying at home as much as possible is still recommended. We're just, we're still new into this. It's been around in the world since December and in our, in Kansas since, in Sedgewood County, middle of March in Kansas prior to that. But when you think about it, it's not a very, it seems like a long period of time, but it's not been a very long period of time. So staying home is still something recommended, and especially if someone is in the high-risk category for developing increased complications to COVID-19. Social distancing is really, it will continue to be important through all of these phases, such as, and the same thing as far as hand washing and keeping our fingers away from our face. So maintaining that six-foot distance when possible. If out into the community, into the grocery store, then it's recommended to wear masks, like a cloth mask, especially if it's a busy time and there might be difficulty not being in close contact. But again, please remember that close contact is considered within six feet for more than 10 minutes. And so if you pass someone or happen to be talking to someone for a couple of minutes, you're not going to be considered high-risk as far as being considered a positive, a contact for someone that is positive. So it's important to remember that, because I know there's a lot of anxiety about even returning to work, businesses opening. And so there are things that we can do to really, to help reduce the chance of spreading. Remembering to continue to cover the mouth when coughing or sneezing, whether into a tissue or the arm, the sleeve or our shoulder. And when we wear those cloth masks out in the public, because we want to save the surgical masks more for the, the medical community, but even surgical masks, when you're at a dentist's appointment and our dentists have their mask on, that's more to protect us from them, because they're leaning so close in, so that when they're talking, that we wouldn't be exposed to their spittle or germs. And so masks, primarily in the beginning, that was the only thing they were recommended for, was to really, if someone was sick, to have a mask on, because they keep our own germs from going out. But as time has gone on during the last, you know, two-plus months, and more research being done, there's been research being done on the surgical masks and even cloth masks. And it shows that it does provide some barrier to germs getting in. So even though they were originally really focused on more keeping our own germs from going out, spreading, they do provide some level of protection from the germs getting in. So they really are, are twofold. Clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces daily, whether it's doorknobs or water fountains, if people are having their water fountains open, just any area that is a potential high-touch point, it's important to clean those frequently. And then take care to check on and support our vulnerable populations. And with those primary individual guidelines, also remembering that even if someone feels really confident, because they're healthy and they hardly ever get sick, that if they have any contact with someone with a compromised immune system, or someone over 60 with any kind of a chronic condition, that it's important that they take all those precautions as well, because they could transmit that to someone at high risk. The business guidelines moving forward is creating that social distancing between workers, between workers and the community, customers, and then between customers. And that's basically through the six feet of distancing, whether it be moving the tables and would be moving tables. If some businesses have booths that can't be moved, then having some sort of a barrier like plexiglass between the booths. Modifying workplaces to create physical barriers between people. Same thing with, there's a lot of companies that have, that already have. And I imagine we're creating barriers, whether it's plexiglass or whatnot, that you can put, if you have a workstation close to someone, that that plexiglass can be put in between and those, those staff that work, whether at a cash registers could also do it. I know in the Health Department and other businesses around the community will be looking at purchasing some sort of that plexiglass, or whatever kind of material it is, for those that are greeting customers when they come in, maybe for WIC appointments or checking into the clinic, just so everyone, both parties feel more protected. Implementing procedures to allow employees to telecommute whenever possible. And I know for some businesses that that is not a possibility. But for many, I think there's been businesses that really have, we definitely, at the Health Department and in the county, have found ways to be creative with having staff telecommute. And those that are able to perform their, their job on a regular basis from home, we're going to continue to allow that to happen. So implement new plans or continue to incorporate personal protective equipment. So I'm really glad to hear that the, the Chamber is coordinating that for our business community. And maintain or increase cleaning protocols and processes. And I know those businesses that have been able to remain open prior to even going into Phase One, that the majority that I heard from were, had really stepped up the game when it came to cleaning everything. And then support for employees to remain at home if they are unwell, or have been in close contact with someone that's sick. Because if someone's in close contact with a COVID-19 person that has COVID-19, they need to be able to stay home for 14 days. And I know there are a lot of people that are afraid that if they don't go to work, that they might lose their job. And it's going to be really important to help control the spread of COVID-19, that employees are allowed to stay home when they're ill. Loosening restrictions in Phase One. It's the general principles to be adhered to and maintained throughout Phase One for safety and reduced transmission. Maintaining the social distancing, so really the things that I just covered. Maintaining social distancing, continuing to wash the hands with soap and water, and when soap and water isn't available, to use hand sanitizer. Screen workers for fevers and symptoms of COVID-19 with a questionnaire at the workplace entrance daily, checking for fever, cough, shortness of breath, sore throat, headache, chills, aches, fatigue, loss of smell or taste, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea in the last 48 hours. Staying at home is still the safest, particularly if in contact with anyone in the vulnerable population, and staying at home if ill. I know at the Health Department, every morning, we all take our, we all have a thermometer and take our, our temperatures and report it to a nurse. And if anyone's over 99.6, then they are asked to go home. We also screen people coming into our clinic for.
Commissioner, how? Yes, so, so far in this document, and going back to the, one of the front pages here, it says that this is a guideline that's recommended. And that was the first couple of pages you read. The first part was for individuals, the second part was for businesses. And then we moved into what we call Phase One.
Yes.
And, but the, the first sentence says, general principles to be adhered to and maintained. So I'm just trying to be clear, are these recommendations, or are these requirements?
Well, these are also. Well, these are also in the governor's document.
I'd like to separate-
It is a continuation of what people have been doing. Do people have to maintain social distancing and wash their hands? No. I mean, there's not someone that's going to arrest them for not doing that. But if someone wants to stay safe, it's important to do that.
Some of this stuff obviously is recommendations. And I think washing hands and social distancing, those are obviously recommendations.
Yes.
Okay. But then there's a part of this that says, screen workers for fevers and any symptoms of COVID, and it goes on. Is that a recommendation or is that-
These are routines and activities that are encouraged and recommended for our business community.
Okay. I guess I would like that the leading sentence has, has general principles to be adhered to and maintained. It should say, general principles recommended throughout phase one. This makes it a little clearer that this is not part of the law. This is simply things that we think are good ideas.
That can be modified.
Thank you.
So the general provisions, and these are from the, the first part are all from the governors. So these are, stay at home, no, this is the, let me see. Oh, let me go back, sorry. So stay at home remains the safest. So for the general public, work from home is essential. No gatherings over 10. That is part of the governor's, part of the governor's order. So the washing, the hand sanitizing, that is all part of what is recommenda, recommended as far as individuals are encouraged to wear masks in public. Establishments not allowed to be open. K through 12 schools until May 29th, except-
Adrian, can I-
It's okay if she-
Okay. Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So K through 12 schools until May 29th, except is allowed in the executive order 20-07. The higher education facilities that close before May 4th should remain closed in a personal, in for personal learning or events involving groups of more than 10 individuals present at a time. Bars and clubs are to remain closed, except those already operating curbside and carry-out services. We are recommending public playgrounds remain closed. We are recommending that self-serve food and drinks and buffets remain closed. Establishments not allowed to open under the governor's order. Nail salons, barber shops, hair salons, tattoo parlors, and personal services businesses where close contact cannot be avoided. Fitness centers and gyms, indoor leisure spaces and entertainment, such as movie theaters, museums, trampoline parks, casinos.
So I have just a couple of questions around the gathering of over 10. And we had this conversation last week, Chairman, around the gathering size. And I think last week, we had talked about it being groups of 10, not a total max capacity of 10, groups of 10. So that to me, we had 81 Speedway call us again, right? We had two emails from them. I think all of us received those. If they're able to socially distance with groups of 10 or fewer, why wouldn't they be able to adhere to these guidelines? If they are able to adhere to these guidelines, I don't understand, if it's groups of 10-
I get it. Well, there's also a thing in there about capacity of whatever was up to 2,000 or more.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, it's, it also restricts, she, the governor has restricted entertainment venues of, that were the capacity of 2,000 or more.
I understand that. But for, for groups of 10 to socially distance, I think there's a lot of confusion around that. Is anybody else understanding what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
Commissioner O'Donnell? I agree, because I think the entertainment venues are more like a movie theater or our Introspanca Arena versus an outdoor venue, which you could fit 2,000 people on a, on a, you know, in an outdoor baseball field. So I do think it is, it is very confusing.
Up to the bar, I think that's what they say. You know, not adhering to those guidelines. You know, how are we going to enforce these things if these are just recommendations? So I know I asked a lot of questions there, but you also, last week, Dr. Menz recommended to close public playgrounds and beverage, food, self-service, and buffets. We all see that QT is open this week with self-service of hot dogs and such. So those are my main questions around this right here. And I guess if it's just a recommendation, how do we, how do we address these things? That was a lot in one.
It's hard to enforce a recommendation, I would think.
Let me, let me just interject here. Many of your questions, Commissioner, will be addressed by Tanya because the front end of this document, which Adrian is covering, are general best practices and guidelines, which are just good common sense guidelines as we, as we coexist with the virus. I think that's what she's trying to get through here. She's getting into general provisions now, which are some specifics of the governor's order. But Tanya will get into some of the nuts and bolts of the, like the dental hygienist question and hairdresser question. We should get into some of those nuts and bolts during her presentation. So if we just, if we give it a chance to go through, I think we can come back and maybe try to sweep all this up at the end.
Thanks.
I may also add as a, as a follow-up to the county manager's points, Justin Wagner's in here. I can help as well. We can answer any of your specific questions, Commissioner, in this meeting about what we, how we interpret the governor's order. And some of the questions that you, you addressed were not recommendations, they're actually part of our order. When we're talking about venues of 2,000 or more or, you know, those kinds of things are part of the order, not, they're not just general recommendations. And we can be more restrictive in some of these areas, but we can't be less restrictive. So we interpret the order and try to do as best we can on how gatherings and those things are defined. And we'll be happy to address any of them specifically if the commission wants us to.
And my last part, last slide, is general provisions. Activities not allowed to open during phase one. Community centers, fairs, festivals, parades, graduations can occur. Organized sports facilities, organized team and recreational team sports, large entertainment venues with capacity of 2,000. Public swimming pools, and then licensed, non-licensed summer camps cannot open. So licensed summer camps can be open. And then public and private gatherings. So all mass gatherings, public or private, are limited to no more than 10 individuals. And I know that there's still some gray area in here. And this includes, there's some question, and Justin can possibly talk to this, but still some question about funerals and weddings, but celebrations, business retreats, plays, theaters, those were in the governor's order, but the funerals and weddings, there's some question. And then the last part is travel. That travel is not recommended for anybody in that high-risk group with pre-existing conditions or compromised immune system. And if you must travel for essential business, to practice social distancing as much as possible, wear at least a cloth mask on the airplane, and don't travel if someone is ill or you are ill. And check out any location that you might be going to to see if they have a lot of COVID-19 in the, in their area. And there are several states that if you travel to, that it will be, it was recommended to quarantine for 14 days after returning to, from any of those locations. So it's important to know what those are. We do have those on the website.
Commissioner Howell has a question.
This is just a little thing, but sometimes we use the word gathering. Some places you use the word, the phrase mass gathering. And in my own idea, I guess mass gathering to me is something much larger than 10 people. But it's confusing when you use the word mass, the phrase mass gathering, when you're referring to something that's maybe two or three people, which is why it's you being used in this document. So I guess I'd like to eliminate the word mass gathering, unless you're talking about something that's like a really large event, like a high school graduation or a, you know, some kind of a big assembly, more than 10 people. But to me, it's just a little thing, but it, to me, it adds confusion to this because I've had to explain that numerous times to people that when we use the word mass gathering, we're talking about up to 10 people. And I don't know why we're using the term mass.
It's part of the governor's order and others, that terminology.
Even if you look it up on, go Google the term, you'll find out, some people say it's 5,000 or 1,000 or even 100 people, but it's not 10. I mean, it's just, it's a bit of a misnomer. It would help clean up the clarity of this document just a little bit. And back to the point that was made earlier, I strongly suggest we would separate out what is required versus what is recommended. To me, this whole document has intermingled as we go through this. It's actually adding confusion. So I'd like to somehow separate those two things before we adopt this document. Thank you.
Okay. You have other questions? Okay.
I don't know.
We're not going to adopt this, are we?
I don't, I don't know what the recommendation is, so.
Okay. Let's, let me, while Tanya's taking the podium, let me address that. This is guidelines and best practices for today. The commission will, as a body, decide what we're going to do with this, whether to accept none of it, all of it, or a hybrid of it. We're making corrections as we go here. It's a living document at this point. I again say, the reason and the purpose for this today was to try to answer the bell from the April 24th meeting that the business community and the public wanted this. So this is our first draft at that. So let's let Tanya get into the specifics of the business component of this, and then we can come back and revisit that question again.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. As the manager mentioned last Friday during your discussion of the governor's reopen Kansas plan, I would be here this morning to provide you with a framework for the Sedgwick County Business and Industry Phase One Economic Recovery Plan. Before I do so, I'd like to step you through the work and process after your meeting on April 24th with the business and industry stakeholders about the reopening of Sedgwick County. The manager put together a team that included Tammy Bradley with Bothner and Bradley, Erin Davis with WSU Public Health Initiatives, and assisting Sedgwick County Health Department, Erin Norton, management intern, and myself. This team immediately assembled after the April 24th meeting to continue conversations and engage these key stakeholders, as well as others in the community, to understand and get feedback on best practices, guidance from each business sector. These stakeholders have their fingers on the pulse of their industries and connections with counterparts across city and in some cases, the country. Working together with these stakeholders, we came up with guidelines. You see in this recovery plan, we took into account their suggestions, best practices, and direction. The discussion we heard from all industries was a need to have clear and consistent guidance from Sedgwick County. Their primary concern is for the safety of their employees and customers and want to take the appropriate steps to provide guidance. As you begin to look at the document, we're going to cover phase one, and we have 14 industries identified. Within each of those, you'll see a contact intensity of high, medium, and low. This rates how the business, how much the business or industry has people interacting in close proximity. Next are the guidelines per industry, and the last column will indicate if there will be additional information to come, usually in the form of best practices that'll be found in the appendix. So consistent with the governor's plan, we are currently in phase one, and our work with the appendices will hopefully be done by Friday. So I'd like to now, if we can, just turn to page eight, and I'd like to go through each industry, and I'll try to do that fairly quickly so I don't belabor the meeting. So I'll start out just with going over the minimum requirements for all businesses and organizations. And again, I'll just point out that these are industry guidelines and best practices. So provide all staff with some level of face covering when interacting with the public and/or provide ability for staff and public to maintain six feet of social distancing. If six feet isn't feasible due to manufacturing or other factory work, masks are required. And to the best of their ability, address the primary business guidelines noted in this plan. That goes back to page four. So the first business industry is childcare. Contact intensity is high. Childcare facilities may remain open but must create strict policies and guidelines. For more details, you'll be able to click on a link there for additional information. To remain open, childcare facilities must implement social distancing strategies, intensify cleaning and disinfection efforts, modify drop-off and pickup procedures, implement screening procedures for both staff and children. Staff must wear face coverings. If playground equipment is used, must be cleaned in between classes, as well as equipment used. Parents, as always, are not to bring their children if their temperature is above 99.9.
Tanya, can I ask a question, please? Isn't childcare, even in the governor's order, they're licensed, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. So these are just kind of a reminder for them all? I mean, they're all-
Correct. Yep. That's correct.
Same with the next couple, I think. Chiropractic, education, they're all licensed already?
Correct. That's correct. But we were getting feedback, and so we wanted to provide some information there. Chiropractic, ophthalmology, dentistry, to Commissioner Cruz's question, and specialty medical. Contact intensity there is medium. Guidelines are by appointment only. We are suggesting that they follow state and national association-recommended guidelines. Providers and clients wear masks, with the exception, of course, of the dental patient, and modify waiting areas to provide ability for staff and public to maintain six feet of social distancing. For education-
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you.
Yes.
So, you know, when we're talking about the contact intensity and how we're, like, is that because it's not a lot of people? Or, I mean, the medium contact intensity for a dentist, I mean, you're in somebody's mouth. How is that not high contact?
And this information, I'll just tell you, came from John Hopkins. So, yep, that's where we got this contact intensity from, so.
Good. Continue.
Okay. So I'll move on to education, summer school. Contact intensity high. Guidelines there are remote or distance learning recommended. K through 12, if fewer than 10 students, instructors or staff be present for normal operations. And again, see the state plan there. Higher education facilities that are closed before May 4th should remain closed for in-person learning or events involving groups or more, of more than 10 individuals present at a time. Next, we'll move into general businesses, offices, and nonprofits. Contact intensity there is low. Guidelines, provide the ability for staff and the public to maintain six feet of social distancing, including cash registers, to maintain six feet of distance between workers. Perform enhanced cleaning daily. Recommend workers wear masks at all time. Screen workers for fevers and any symptoms of COVID with questionnaire at workplace entrance. Fever, cough, shortness of breath, sore throat, headache, chills, aches, fatigue, loss of smell or taste, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea within the last 48 hours. And we will have an appendix on that for best practices. Next business is grocery. Contact intensity low. Again, guidelines and best practices there. It's maximum of 50% fire code occupancy for customer. That would not include employees or vendor partners in that count. Provide the ability for staff and the public to maintain six feet of social distancing. Employees to wear masks. Masks recommended for consumers. And maintain six feet of social distancing. Hotels, lobbies, and tourism, contact intensity low. Common areas, maximum of 50% of fire code occupancy. And arrange to maintain six feet of social distancing. Restaurant guidelines of maximum 50% fire code occupancy for customers with six feet of social distancing. Buffets and self-services not allowed. Staff wear masks. Next category is independent contractors. Includes construction and home services, plumbing, HVAC, electrical, mechanical, pest control, for example. Contact intensity low. Maintain six feet of social distancing, wear masks on the job and while interacting with the public. Minimize ride sharing, avoid sharing tools. Clean and disinfect frequently-used tools and equipment. Keep in-person meetings as short as possible and limit the number of workings, excuse me, workers in attendance for those meetings. Wear foot coverings when entering occupied residence. Next category is libraries. Contact intensity low, and we are in progress of providing those guidelines. Next category is manufacturing to cover small and medium-sized companies. Contact intensity there is medium. Provide all staff with some level of face coverings when interacting with the public and/or provide the ability for staff and the public to maintain six feet of social distancing. If six feet isn't, excuse me, feasible due to manufacturing or other factory work, masks are required. To the best of their ability, address the primary business guidelines noted in this plan and consider split breaks and staging lunches. Next is nursing home, long-term care, and congregate care facilities. Contact intensity is high. Have residents wear masks when outside of rooms. Perform enhanced cleaning daily. No visitors. Maintain social distancing as much as possible. Adjust the layout of common areas, including dining facilities, to maintain six feet- Adjust the layout of common areas, including dining facilities, to maintain six feet between residents. Screen workers for fevers and any symptoms of COVID with questionnaire at workplace entrance. Staff should wear masks, gloves, and gowns at all times when providing direct care to patients, when preparing medication for distribution, or passing out meds when preparing, serving, or delivering food or drink, and when in residence rooms. Next category is places of worship, which cover churches, synagogues, mosques. Contact intensity, high. Guideline there is maximum of 50% of fire code occupancy and/or services with 10 or less individuals in gatherings with six feet of distancing permitted. Drive-up parking lot services allowed. Virtual services encouraged. Recommend masks worn by all. Common areas modified to maintain six feet of distance between seating and non-household members, and consider no-touch worship services. Next category is restaurants. Contact intensity, medium. Guidelines there are maximum of 50% of fire code occupancy, not including employees as long as six feet is between tables, and limit 10 people per table.
Commissioner Cruz, excuse me.
So this is different than the Governor's Order?
This is, this is, again, guidelines and best practices. So when we reached out to our stakeholders in the restaurant community, this is what they are saying that they would like for their, this is what they're saying is their best practice, is to put in a 50% occupancy for the restaurants. And I might just mention that John Rolfe, we have John Rolfe on the phone, as well as Cheryl Woolford, who are our key stakeholders in restaurants and manufacturing, and I'd be glad, you know, if you want to get their input as well.
No, I just wanted to point out that this is different than what we had talked about last week in regards to having six feet between groups of 10. You could have as many groups of 10 as long as you could fit it, but they had to have the six feet. So now we're saying that it's 50% of the capacity of a restaurant.
I don't know that we're saying anything at this point. We're just saying that this is what the restaurant community has said. This is what they would, they are saying is their best practice.
But this 50% was not mentioned, though, in the Governor's Order?
Correct.
I guess that's what I'm trying to point out.
Correct. The Governor did not put any capacity on occupancy. Okay. Online by phone orders for takeout. Curbside or drive-through pickup or delivery recommended. Maintain social distancing of workers as much as possible. Employees should wear masks at all time.
Can you please mute, please?
Yep. Hey, guys?
Hey, Cheryl.
I can't.
Cheryl, can you please mute your phone, please?
I think you're muted, that's why.
Can you please mute your phones, please? Thank you.
Adjust the layout of common areas, including cash registers, to maintain six feet of distance between workers. Perform enhanced cleanings daily. Screen workers for fevers and any symptoms of COVID with a questionnaire at workplace entrance. No self-service buffets or salad bars. Remove bar stools from bar area. No table condiments unless requested, then removed and sanitized between each patron. Retail, contact intensity, low. Guidelines, maximum of 50% of fire code occupancy, not including employees for retail stores. Maintain social distancing of workers as much as possible. Adjust the layout of common areas, including cash registers, to maintain six foot of distance between workers. Perform enhanced cleanings daily. Employees should wear masks at all time. Screen workers for fevers and any symptoms of COVID with a questionnaire at workplace entrance. And then lastly, we have veterinarian care. Contact intensity, low. Guidelines there are by appointment only. Follow state and national association recommended guidelines. Provider and clients, wear masks, clients being human beings there. Modify waiting areas to provide ability for staff and public to maintain six feet of social distancing.
Chairman, Tanya, I just have a question about, I did receive a question around trying on clothes.
And so I reached out to the person that I have in contact for retail, and she said, right now they're closed. They are having a discussion across their organization, but right now the dressing room remains closed.
Okay.
And so that concludes Phase One. And like I said, we've got Cheryl Woolford with Automation Plus on the line, John Rolfe with Thrive Management Group, and as well, we've got Tammy Bradley on the phone, who was part of the team and available to answer any questions that you have. And I'll stop there so we can get through your Phase One questions that you might have.
Any questions from any of the Commissioners so far? Okay. Commissioner Hal?
Yeah. Curiously, how do we plan to use this document? Are we going to just put this on the website, and people are going to access it for just ideas on what they should or can do?
That would be the plan, is that we would put it out on the website for businesses to see. And then, like I said, we're working on the appendix. Appendix would be one to two-page. That would give further information and guidelines, as well as links to, as you saw, I think the Governor put out, business guidelines. So we would have that additional information with the links, and then any other information that we can find that would be helpful to these businesses.
I guess I, I think that the industries that led and provided, if you will, recommendations for their own industries, I appreciate them doing that. But the document, the way it's written right now, I have a really hard time figuring out from the document what is required and what's recommended. And it just continues to bother me. The stuff is so intermingled, I can't tell exactly what is required. And I think that's, a lot of them are really wanting to know what is required. And as written, the document is virtually unusable. I'm somewhat disappointed. Are we still planning to do, planning to do an FAQ for businesses to understand exactly what is the minimum requirements under the law? Is that still something that's coming, or is this supposed to check that box?
Well, I think that, I think what you have in front of you today, first of all, there's a Governor's Order out there, and we can do an FAQ on the Governor's Order with, as best we can, by interpreting it and put out a fact sheet. I think that what we heard, not only in our April 24 meeting, but since then, is that our business community has a lot of questions about the Governor's Order. Our business, the Sedgwick County Business Community, I can't speak for the rest of the state. And they wanted something, they wanted it on the 24th, and they want it today yet. They want something that is more easily accessible and makes sense to them, and they can use as a best practice as they try to negotiate through this during these various phases. That's all we've attempted to do today, is to craft some kind of document that is a best practice guideline for businesses to use to open safely. The other municipal counties are doing this, too. Johnson County is doing this. Other counties in the northeast part of the state are putting a county plan together to augment and supplement the Governor's Plan, which is leaving a lot of questions out there for local businesses. That's all we're attempting to do right now.
I think that's well-intentioned. Again, again, it's hard to understand exactly what is required versus recommended in this document. And I feel, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be able to answer the questions for people who have, for the businesses especially, that have questions, whether something is required or not. And to me, this isn't really clear enough. I know this, it's a great document for what it's trying to do, but it's, it doesn't really answer that question with clarity. And I'm struggling with this document being that answer. For example, the 50% occupancy, for example, do they need to, do they actually need to, you know, count the number of patrons in there and have a number they're looking for to make sure they don't hit that number, and then start turning people away? That's, that's, again, it's not part of the law. It's recommended in this document. But, you know, what is their responsibility under the law? And I just think, they need to know that with clarity. And as we go into Phase Two here, the number changes to 75%. So it's throughout the entire document. And I'm having trouble saying that this really solves the need of the community to know exactly what they have to do to comply with the law. To me, that's not clear, so.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Tanya, during your presentation, I have had some Facebook messages and text messages from people that would like to see this on our Facebook page, on our website as well, just so they could look at it.
Sure.
I think the one piece of clarification we need is, regardless with the churches, there's still that federal decision with that Judge Broom's sit-down that I think would be helpful as well when we're looking at the best practices, that there have been federal decisions saying, we can't really tell a church how, how to do it, but if they're looking for their best guidelines, they can do it.
Sure.
Because I know churches are trying to get to some semblance of normalcy. I see where the diocese is starting up masks today and stuff. So I think it would be good just for some type of notation that there's been a federal decision regarding courts. But having best practices isn't a problem. So that would be my, my only edit to this, is that regarding churches and religious institutions. But the rest of it, I would like to see just available for people, so I can direct them to our website.
Very good.
Or Facebook.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I think the document is great. I think that, I know that this took a long time to put together. Would it have been ideal to have it last Friday, of course? But obviously, time constraints didn't allow. I think that, you know, the recommendations, if we just change a little bit of the language, I don't think we should get hung up on that. I think that these are clear guidelines. I think that there are, I mean, I would agree that there are a couple of confusing things that we probably need to address. I mean, if we were to adopt this as-is, the, just over here on the beverage, food service, self-service, and buffets, I mean, that's, that wasn't in the Governor's Plan. We talked about it last week. I talked about it a few minutes ago. So that, I mean, if we want to make revisions, or if we want to mark stuff out of this, I think that that's important that we discuss right now. I think that's why we're having this right now, because we haven't seen this before. So our, you know, I think, I think this is a great document. I really applaud your efforts, all of you, Aaron, Tammy, both Aarons. You know, this is a lot. I think this is exactly what our community is asking for. If we were to put this up and we needed to change it, I think that we could do that if, you know, Cheryl or John on the phone, or other, you know, business owners have questions. You know, I just, I guess I'm really, the main things are the, you know, the 50% occupancy versus the 10 group grouping, you know, that's where I'm mainly confused. So I think that if we had those clarifications, added the words "recommendations" rather than, I mean, I think it's just based on the language. So I really applaud your efforts. Are we going to go through all of this right now?
I was going to stop at Phase One, and just let you know that we're working on Phase Two. We've already had conversations with those business and industries in the Governor's Plan that began to open up in Phase Two. So we've already started to have conversation with nail salon, hair salons, those industries that will open up on Phase Two. So, you know, I might just say that this is a working document, and I wasn't going to go into Phase Two, but just to let you know that we're already having those conversations.
Can I, can I just add that, I think, my recommendation would be that maybe at the beginning of these categories, we reference what is required or limited from the Governor's perspective, and then next phase is, next is Sedgwick County recommendations.
Okay.
So they know, to Commissioner Hal's point, this is what's required, or whatever the rules are. I just text and got him that the Governor does have apparently an FAQ that says this is what's required and this is what's recommended. So, anyway, because for sure, the restaurant thing, this is, this is what you have to do. Six-foot spacing and 10 people, and then this is what would be recommended if Sedgwick County industry recommends. Anyway, just my thought. Okay. Commissioner Hal?
Just another word I like. I like the word encouraged. I mean, for example, if you're going to go to a restaurant and sit down and have a meal, you're not going to wear a face mask. Similarly, if you're going to go and sit down in church, the situation's very similar in many ways, other than you're not having a meal, you're sitting there listening to somebody speak, or you're singing, or whatever it is. I think, again, you might just say, you know, face, you know, if someone wants to wear a face mask, we certainly encourage them to do that. But even the word "recommend" in that case may not be the right word. Certainly isn't mandated, it's encouraged. If someone wants to wear one, we think it's a great idea. You know, we can use that word throughout the document as well. So just make it a little more friendly.
Okay.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do appreciate the work that the staff has put in on the document. The questions that we keep getting over and over again are, does it apply to me? What do I need to do? When can I start doing something different? And we need some kind of guidance like this to get out so that we can answer those questions. The Sedgwick County Fair is coming up this summer, and I've talked with those folks a couple times. What do we need to do? The problem is, we don't even know what the status is going to be, whether or not the Governor's going to extend this, because we don't know if there's going to be a spike and some other actions are going to have to be taken. There's a huge state trap meet coming up in early June, and they are very concerned what can they do in early June to meet those requirements. So those are just two examples of many, many different queries that I've received. I've generally forwarded them to our legal folks. They've done a great job of trying to interpret what the guidance is. This gives the public another option to take a look at on what kind of guidelines that they put together. I've read what the Catholic Diocese has put out, and that's, I think it probably goes a little bit beyond what we've even put in here with what they've put out for guidance for the Catholic Church. So we have to have some kind of a starting point. We do need to say what are guidelines and what are requirements. And the requirements are coming out of the Governor's Office. The guidelines are the things that we worked with, with the community here a week ago, Friday. So, and I appreciate what the staff has done, and I appreciate that they're taking some action so that we can start clarifying this, because this is confusing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. It, I mean, just so happens that we do have two business owners on the line. I wonder if we could maybe just hear from each of them briefly, as far as how they feel it is, or improvements that need to be made.
I think both John and Cheryl have texted me. They had to get off because they had other commitments, but both of them texted in our, they are supportive of the document, but clearly understand that the Commission will make the decision on what happens with this.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so we need a plan of action on this at this point? We've had a lot of comments that are not real finite. I'm hesitant to adopt this. I guess we can, we can post it. I think it's going to create a lot of questions. They're going to, I think a lot of industries are going to say, well, does this mean I have to do this or that? But-
You might check who just called in there, Chairman, I don't know.
Somebody on the line? Hello? If you're muted.
I think at minimum, based on you and Commissioner Hal's comments, we should at least go in and more articulately put in what the requirements are versus what are recommendations. I don't, I don't know-
For instance, I mean, the fair, I mean, it's clear in the Governor's Order that fairs are prohibited, at least in this first 14 days. She says the word "fair," and sports gatherings, large sports things are in, they're prohibited, not allowed in the first phase. So some of this stuff is crystal clear, some is gray, and so if we put our layer on top of it, I just don't, I'm not sure how. It's a great effort to educate and guide, but I don't know that they're, I don't know that they're all going to say, well, what's required and what's not at this point, or what's just preferred.
Could there-
Go ahead, Commissioner Cruz.
Could there be a clarification as to what the differences are? I mean, it doesn't seem like there's much difference, really, other than the 50% occupancy. We're talking about buffets and the other playgrounds. Those are really the only three things that I see so far that are different. Correct me if I'm wrong.
What, so what we're asking for in, to add on to the Governor's Order, and Adrian, you might want to come back in for this, was the public playgrounds and the beverage, food, self-service, and buffets. That would be in addition to what Adrian was asking for not to be allowed on top of the Governor's Order. That's what she asked for in the general provisions. The- The 50% that when we were getting into, into the business and industry, those are all guidelines. So those were not, we weren't asking for anything in addition to the governor's order. Those are just guidelines and best practices per industry. So Adrian, do you wanna speak to that?
And while she's coming up, Mr. Papun raised his hand.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think, to follow up on what Tanya just said, if we're talking about taking action today in terms of buffets or playground equipment and those things, we need to determine whether that's going to be an order, gathering order by the Board of County Commissioners, or gathering order by Dr. Minns. All the previous orders have been from Dr. Minns, and this could be a recommendation to Dr. Minns to go further than what the governor has done and restrict these other things, but I think that you need to understand that clarification there and what action you'd be taking. Just informally taking a vote today to redo, you know, not to limit buffets, limit playground equipment, and that is not going to have any effect, and we have an opportunity to draw up an order and look at that.
And those two items were supported by Dr. Minns, as far as the playground equipment not being in use in Phase 1, and the self-serve beverage and food as well.
Kinda seems like, though, the train is down the track with that, with QT opening, and how is the, how is the community going? I'm not saying one way or another, I'm just saying that that's how it was open yesterday. A lot of folks are using it. What's the reaction of the public if we shut it down now? I understand, though, transmission doesn't absolutely show right away, so I mean, the effects of these being open, we might not see for, you know, a week or so, so I think those are some things to consider.
They're high touch points, and so it's not the beverage or foods themselves, it's the utensils, it's the push, it's, those are very high touch points.
Right, well, you're right, I mean, QuickTrip, personally, it'd be hard pressed for me to tell QuickTrip how to run their operation, when they've been fully engaged in this, I'm sure. They were closing down fountain drinks in areas before we even mandated, before there was some other stuff, so they're, I think they're, I don't know. Commissioner?
And Mr. Chair, yeah, and QuickTrip's notorious for being clean anyway, and when I went in there, I saw that they had a staff member literally just full-time going around cleaning it, and that wouldn't surprise me if QuickTrip's doing that at every one of their locations, just because of their cleanliness, they have the highest standards, anyway, that I've seen it, but I do agree, it's a little hard now to try to put that toothpaste back in the tube. It's gonna be real messy.
Right. So, Tom, you wanna take another stab at it to try to isolate what's required and what's not?
Give us a chance to at least clean it up and put the differences between required and recommended within this. I think, Chairman, just to finish this up, I think this was the businesses' desire to be heard. If the commission, if, we surely don't wanna make it more confusing out there, it's plenty confusing the way it is, and if we think that this document further confuses matters, we surely don't wanna do that. But I think this was our Cedric County businesses trying to come in and give us some guidance on what we should put as a recommended course of action to maybe go beyond the governor's order. And if we're not comfortable with that, clearly, then we will continue to work on it, or if the commission doesn't want any kind of Cedric County plan after, if we wanna simply just refer to the governor's plan as the plan, I think that that's clearly within the board's purview as well, whatever the will of the board is.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes, we're talking about things that were, ideas that are added in this document that are above and beyond the governor's order. I think bar stools are part of that as well. I know there's some restaurants that have a counter with some, what looks like a bar stool, and there are, I think quite a few restaurants in that category. Again, if they were groups of 10, separate by six, separate by six feet, I'm not quite sure why that's included in this. I don't think it's part of the governor's order. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I think one thing that I'd like to point out, though, is last week, we did not adopt a plan. We did not say that we were going to go, we were going to recommend the plan to our community. That was not the will of the board last week, and so I think if our community is asking us for a plan, then we should help them understand what plan we feel like is the best going forward, and give them a plan to go off of, because last week, we did not adopt one. That was not the will of the board. So, how do we plan to address that if our community is asking for it, and we did not do that last week? How do we plan to do that going forward? And also, Mr. Manager, I'd like for you to address enforcement.
Okay.
Well, before that, before enforcement, that's a whole nother, a whole nother...
Ball of wax.
Yes, so can we, let's stay focused on this first, which would be, I'm in favor of, if you can just isolate what's required, the governor's order, and what's recommended, or whatever the words we wanna use, then I'm okay with moving forward. So, Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Going back to last week's discussion, we did have a conversation about essentially accepting the governor's plan. We don't really, Mr. Papun, you'd even said, we don't have to do anything if that's where we're gonna be. And so we didn't make a formal motion, but that clearly was discussed last week. By not making a motion, the governor's plan is what is gonna be applicable in Cedric County. What we have trouble with right now is trying to interpret what that plan means, or some of the details that she did not clarify with great detail, and so we're trying to figure out exactly how to apply those orders specifically to every single application in Cedric County. But I think we have a plan. The plan is the state's plan. Thank you.
All right. So by the time we get the plan revised and recommended, we'll be in Phase 2 anyway, but that's okay. And Mike, you had your hand up.
Oh, I just, I just think part of the confusion here, and it started out even from the beginning by some comments or distinctions that Commissioner Howell was making, is the understanding of what is ordered and what is a recommended plan that we would wanna put on our website, or something. Even the governor's order has links to best industry practices, and these are just guidelines and suggestions, but it's not the letter of the law that she has in her, in her order. And I think what you need, when we talked about we didn't adopt a plan last week, are we talking about not taking Dr. Minns' recommendation with regard to playground equipment or buffets? If we're going to do that, then we're doing something more restrictive than the governor, and that needs to be an order by the Board of Health, or by Dr. Minns, and we can do that, or you could recommend to Dr. Minns to take that action. But that's entirely different than the plan, adopting a plan of just best practices that Tanya's put together today, and that keeps...
Yeah, good point.
Well, I wanna correct that this is, this is not Tanya's plan, this is the business community's communication to us of a plan. I think part of, part of what is confused, what's, what we're struggling with here, is the business community has seen the governor's plan, but they want something a little bit more finite for this jurisdiction, and they also want a level playing field within this jurisdiction, and they're trying to achieve this by what they have told us. Now, and I agree with you, Chairman, and if the directive is, go back and let's separate required versus here's some community recommended guidelines, we can surely do that, and bring this document back, or email it back to you to take a look at it. But I think that is the struggle here. I think this is the, the business community, and it's initiated with the April 24 conference call, they have a, they have a desire for clarity here that I don't know that they feel like they're necessarily getting from the governor's order, and that's the ongoing struggle that we're trying to, trying to help with.
Maybe it would help also if on the very front page, that's gonna be posted, or whatever, right now, it says Cedric County Health and Economic Recovery Plan. We need to include exactly what you said, in cooperation with the Business and Industry Guidelines Economic Recovery Plan. This isn't ours, according to everybody's words, but it says that this is ours on the title page. So it should be Cedric County, whatever, in cooperation with Business and Industry Guidelines Recovery Plan, something to that effect. That way, it's upfront, and then we, maybe on the second page, you say, requirements will be in one section, and then whatever, guidelines and best practices in the other.
Okay.
And I think most of us would probably be good to go.
I will also mention that our businesses have been very generous with their plans.
Right.
A lot of what, when Tanya talks about the appendix, we will put entire plans of businesses. Dylan's, for example, has shared their entire plan. We can make that an attachment, and other grocery stores or other entities can look into that if they really wanna get into the weeds. So that's all, also, all on this site. It's a nice one-stop shop to go to. That's, I mean, we're trying to create a nice one-stop shop for them to go to. May not be there yet, but...
Okay. All right. I'm gonna guess that you, if you did that, can you, Mike, is there, if they email that revisions out, and if we all say it's okay, then we can just post it, or do we have to have a meeting to say it's okay to post it?
Yes, you would have to have, take that action in a public meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Can we do like a serial meeting and get it? Anyway, sorry. Okay. Well, then, we'll have a modification.
I might just talk about enforcement's, is a very simple scenario, and if we're talking about the governor's plan of enforcement, there's basically three options for us to look at, and I've looked around the state of what other jurisdictions are doing. We, let's go to the extremes first. We can make it a clear local law enforcement level. In other words, people, if they have a complaint about how a business is operating, or a social distancing complaint, or a gathering complaint, they would call 911. 911 would then notify the appropriate law enforcement agency of said call. Chief Ramsey on WPD has told me that if we get those calls coming through 911, he does not want them dispatched, he wants them going to a special line, a captain in their police department, we would send all complaints to him, and WPD would then handle that enforcement as they saw fit. The sheriff of Cedric County, Jeff Easter, has asked for a simulcast of those types of complaints to go out on all systems, and then deputies can choose or not choose how to, how to handle those matters. So that's a pure, you know, public safety, law enforcement response. The other extreme is, we can continue to do kind of what we've done for two or three days here, which is refer all these questions to the state of Kansas. We provided the telephone number and a website for people to push those types of questions or those types of complaints to the state of Kansas. There is a middle ground that I think Johnson County's using, for example. They are posting on their website all non-emergency numbers for law enforcement, and they have a number of in Johnson, just like we do, 20 different law enforcement entities, and people are encouraged to call those non-emergency numbers with calls of non-compliance or non-adherence to, to the governor's order. So those are our three options. I'd be glad to make a recommendation if you'd want one, but I'll let the commission choose which of those three, or if there's a fourth that you can think of that I've missed, I'm open for questions.
Well, you've clearly done some research, and I appreciate it very much, 'cause that's, that's not an easy one for, to peel back and come back, but it sounds like you've done some good research. So you have, your first one is 911 with cooperation with the chief and the sheriff on their respective areas. The other end is sending everything to the governor's office, which personally, I don't like overwhelming the governor. They've been fairly cooperative with trying to work with us, but, and then the hybrid is... What's the in-between?
We would post, we would post all law enforcement, non-emergency phone numbers on our website, and citizens would be encouraged to call those numbers with complaints.
Okay. I'm not against having you tell us what your recommendation is, since you've done a lot of research.
I am, I am for the recommendation that keeps heat off of our 911. I'm for the middle recommendation, where we let each law enforcement entity in a non-emergency number status handle these, and that's where we begin to push people.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. Since we're three days into this, I'm just curious if we have some type of data from 911. I assume the first day was probably the worst, it's tapered off since then. Do we have a idea how many calls are flowing into 911 right now over Phase 1?
I don't know if Laura has data. I think the first couple of days into this, we've seen a hodgepodge. Some 911 call, she has advice, and people are calling with, they have a certain business they wanna open, is it okay? And they're calling 911 for that. She's gotten a few complaints. Your office has gotten some complaints, commission office, Mike Papun's office has, my office has. I think, because we've been marketing the state of Kansas, I think some of them are going there. So I think in the first few days, the first 48 hours or so here, we've seen a hodgepodge, and I think it would have value to give people some clearer direction on what to do if they have questions about the governor's order, or if they have a complaint that they would like to make about some type of non-compliance out there.
I think the worst is behind us, probably, because this is the third day into this. I think the first day would probably be worse than today, and I expect it will get better as we go on, but the danger of putting the, the non-emergency numbers on there, of course, is people will call those in a real emergency, which is, I think, the reason we don't typically publish those numbers. So there's a, there's a real risk of doing that.
Well, we have a history of doing non-emergency numbers, for example, on the 4th of July or New Year's Eve, and you're right, Commissioner Howell, we'd have to give clear direction that if you have a true emergency, 911 is the number. Even on the non-emergency lines that exist in police departments, the very first, if you happen to have no one answering that call, and there is a voice message, the very first part of that is, if you have a true emergency, please call 911. If not, leave your message, and then we'll get back to you. So you're right, that there is a, there is a slight risk in putting that out there, that people whose houses are being broke into would maybe call the non-emergency line. Point taken.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a problem with posting the non-emergency numbers, but I think at the same time, some of the people may wanna know what the governor's opinion is, so I don't know why we wouldn't also post the governor's phone number, too, just in case they did have a question that was beyond what our local law enforcement had.
Sure we could do that.
Commissioner Cruz?
I just feel like as the local government here, I think it's important for us to take responsibility on how to handle this. I mean, I don't feel like overwhelming the governor's office. I think that people could get better, faster service if they were dealing with us, rather than sending it to Topeka. So I would not be in favor of sending things to Topeka when we should be handling things here.
Commissioner Dennis?
I didn't say that we were gonna send things to Topeka rather than handling them here. I said, include the governor's office, because there's some things maybe that people don't want to, or that they can't be resolved here, that they need to go to the governor's office. So I think that having that included is important.
Yeah, is an option, 'cause, yeah.
Okay.
So, the will of the commission, do we want to adopt the hybrid plan that Mr. Manager has presented?
What exactly is that?
That we post the numbers of the law enforcement agencies within the, these non, what's the word?
Their general information, non-emergency number.
General information, non-emergency numbers for the various agencies within Cedric County, which, I'll make that motion.
And include the governor's?
Yeah. And include an option at the governor's office, yeah. Okay. All right. Motion in a second? Any other?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. One of my concerns, of course, is the public generally doesn't have a good document yet to go to, to find out what is legal and what's illegal. If you're gonna contact law enforcement, they're gonna be looking for that line of what's legal, what's illegal. And again, if someone says, well, someone's got a bar stool, and they shouldn't have one, or if someone's got a soda fountain, and they shouldn't have one, that's not a legal issue at this point, not according to the state's plan. And so, if someone calls that number, are they gonna have clarity as to what is truly legal versus illegal if we publish those numbers? Are they gonna be able to have something to give them guidance as to what to do?
Well, again, they're non-emergency, so, same with, I guess, with fireworks, can I go six foot high, can I go 10 foot high?
Right, well, I guess, it's presumed that there are potentially illegal acts happening, and of course, under the state's order, if it's illegal, it's a misdemeanor crime. They could, it could receive a ticket or a fine, and possibly even jail time and arrest. So, we're suggesting then, through this, even though it's a non-emergency line, that the law enforcement will involve themselves in activities when there's not clarity to anyone right now as to what is legal and illegal. when there's not clarity to anyone right now as to what is legal and illegal. This is not much different than what we called the snitch line last week. This is just another way to do the same thing.
Okay. Is there a substitute motion or Commissioner O'Donnell?
No, it's not a substitute motion, but, but I thought this is more for general clarification. This isn't to turn in your neighbor. I guess I need clarification on that. This is just for information. This isn't, we're not encouraging that. I know we didn't like the pejorative snitch line. This, from what I'm gathering, is that what you believe?
I think that's what this is.
We asked.
Not a snitch line.
I think this is a snitch line.
Hold on just a minute. We asked the manager to come back with enforcement options because we can do nothing. I guess we could do nothing and since we voted to, to not have that line on, we could just tell the public to call our office and then you can determine to send it to the governor or be involved. We could be involved directly. So we can do nothing and then they're going to call. And since we're the ones that voted to not have that line on, we could step up and answer the calls.
If there's no consequences, how do we expect people to comply?
Well, I agree. And this is for two weeks and then next two weeks from now, it's, it's grown, so. But none of the, okay. Well, I, I like the, the option to, to provide a number. And if it doesn't pass, then, then that's okay. Then we'll do a different, we have no enforcement then.
I think people may not do this perfectly and there's, there's probably going to be some people who are going to make, do some things that will be, you know, wrong even according to the governor's order. But we've said already today and we're going to continue to monitor what's happening at the hospitals. As much as I may not be happy with the fairness aspect, someone does something the right way and someone does it the wrong way, there's an issue of fairness there that people are very concerned about. I, I, I understand that, but if the hospitals are fine, they've got capacity, they're, they're managing the situation at the hospitals, that's our focus. Then I guess, to the best of our ability, communicate to the public that this is what is, is required and, and they're doing a pretty good job of complying. Most people are, are doing a good, a good job. I guess I'm not concerned necessarily that we have to do enforcement if that's where we are, if that's where we are right now. A lot of great people doing a lot of great things. The hospitals are managing the situation. I think where we are right now is a good position.
Okay.
I might add, Rusty just texted me a portion of the governor's order and it says, this is a quote, "I will issue an executive order making the mass gathering business activity venue restrictions law for phase one. It is a crime to violate the executive order, but local law enforcement is encouraged to pursue compliance before using criminal enforcement measures." That's why I think we supported the non-emergency line to give law enforcement the opportunity at their discretion to try to compromise with people before they went into law enforcement mode. So to our point before, there is some very clear components of the governor's order. I agree there is some gray, but there's some very clear that I think if people on the street see violation of that, are going to seek someone to tell that there's non-compliance. And I, we're just trying to figure out how to, we want to manage that.
Commissioner Cruz. Thanks for the clarification, Tom.
I, I just, again, if, if we don't have any sort of consequences, people are not just going to do the, the right thing. I mean, that's why we have seatbelt laws. That's why we have no smoking laws. That's why we have all of these things in place to protect folks. If we didn't have those things, would people just automatically do them? That's why they're there. So I think it's important for us to understand that, yes, the goal is to keep people out of the hospital. The goal is to keep capacity there for people who do need care. But if we don't ease these things up and ease these, ease the restrictions in, in a, a very safe way, what's to say people aren't going to comply with the ease of things? And I mean, what, what are we saying to the public? They don't have to comply with anything?
Well, all right.
Just, just a quick response. I think that many people would, would wear their seatbelt or, or be sensitive to others and, and issues of smoking, regardless of what the law says. And despite the law, many people still don't wear their seatbelts and still don't abide by these non-smoking, non-smoking laws. And so the reality is that you're not going to, you're not going to be able to enforce it perfectly.
Okay, can we, can we, let's just bring this back. This isn't about seatbelts and smoking.
Right.
And so.
Those were examples that I was trying to.
I understand. I'm just saying, let's, let's keep focused and, and let's not do the roundtable dialogue again, please. And, and if we don't want to do anything, then, then, or want to make a substitute motion or whatever. But right as of now, there's a motion and a second to provide these numbers, these non-emergency numbers. And, and that's on the floor. If there's any other comments, then, then more than, let's, let's share them. And if not, then, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. Okay, Tom, so the motion fails. So I'm not sure what we're going to do, if there's any recommendations for, for future enforcement or we just let it sit. So I don't have another recommendation. And it's being quiet.
I, I have a recommendation. I'd like to place one number and, that people can call, one number. If we're going to enforce things, I, I don't want to send it up to the governor's office, which is why I voted no on that last motion. I would like to offer people one number that they can call because giving multiple numbers, even if it's a non-emergent line, they need to have one place where they can go. I would like to make a motion to provide one number, a non-emergent line, for people to call.
Okay. There's a motion. And I don't hear a second. I think last week we voted to take down one number.
What's the difference in the motion we just had? It was to send it to the governor's office. That's why I didn't vote for that.
No, the motion I just, we just, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cruz. The motion we had was to set up non-emergency numbers to all of the law enforcement in this area.
Plus the governor's office, yes.
Right. Okay, so.
I'm, I'm not in favor of sending it to the governor's office. I think we need to handle it here, which is why I voted no on that last motion.
Okay. Well, thanks for explaining. So your motion is to have one number to call.
Sure.
And I don't see a second likely. I, I'm not seconding it because we just voted last week to eliminate one number.
What's the difference in the last motion, though? We're, we're offering multiple numbers, but we won't offer one number?
Yeah, non-emergency numbers instead of one.
So also, I will change my motion to have multiple non-emergent numbers minus the governor's order, minus the governor's.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Well, I won't support that mainly because you're eliminating one number that the public may need to use in order to be able to contact the governor. I don't understand why we would eliminate them being able to contact the governor if they've got a concern. So I won't support the motion.
Okay. All right. Then the motion as presented dies for lack of a second, so. Okay, moving forward. Tom, is there another item?
No, we covered Mike's ready, sir, so that is the end of that item.
Okay. So you don't have an enforcement world, so we'll just see where the calls come and deal with it then as we, as a commission. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, acceptance of donations of personal protective equipment and other materials from various citizens and community partners for COVID-19 response.
Chairman, this is Rusty on the line.
Rusty? You're on the line. Hold on just a minute. Let's unmute me. Rusty, you on the line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. What do you got for us?
Okay, so today we wanted to briefly recognize those individuals and businesses who have donated to Cedric County and to the Emergency Operations Center in support of medical providers and first response agencies thus far, since about March 25th through, through the end of April. I'll try to keep this brief, but in order to recognize the individuals, I will read through the list here. These individuals provided different types of equipment, anywhere from a few, you know, a box of gloves, cases of water, masks, hand sanitizers and things of those natures. So the list consists of those who have donated to support medical and first responders are Shirley Khan, Barbara Scott, Airbus, Great Plains United Methodist Church, Wichita State University. We've had a lot of work with them, Wichita State Tech, different departments within WSU, Concentrix, the Medical Society of Cedric County, Quick Stitch, Hinson Contractors, Tam Nguyen, Nguyen C. Leian, Lee Min Hon, the Medical Society of Cedric County, which I've already covered, Motion Industries, All Brand Distribution LLC, AV Nails and Spa, the Noch Min Le family, Tina Thai, Westlake Ace Hardware, PPG Paints, Riordan Clinic, Simone Hino Hossa, The United Way, Chin Lee, Great Plains Industries, the Kansas Humane Society, Orphan Grain Train, David Blake Lawler Dentist Office, The United Way, Motion Industries, Munson Elementary School, USD 259 School Service Center, Century Manufacturing, Inc., Shayla Martinez, Martha Schmidt, Dan Rousher, Kappa Epsilon KU Pharmacy Students, Costco Wholesale, the U.S. Postal Service, Alexandra Wolf and the Derby U.S. Postal Office. So that is the list of those who have donated all types of supplies in support of our efforts here in Cedric County. And again, we want to recognize them and thank them. So I would ask that the commission approve these donations and authorize the chairman to sign a letter, which we will provide here in the near future for you to have signature for all these folks on their letters.
Okay. Thank you very much for supporting. Wow. The community is showing up big to donate. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Any commissioners? Do you have anything to add to that? Or Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. I think it's fantastic. We sincerely appreciate the community supporting all of our actions and protecting the community. I make a motion that we approve the letters that the chairman will sign out thanking them for their offers.
Second.
Then a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. Thank you, Rusty. And it's been, it's been very helpful that as we've all received emails and phone calls that we're able to, to, to navigate those people over to, to your office with Tom to help coordinate all this. It's been very, very helpful. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Chairman, interrupt. We have a time management situation going on right now. It's 12:30. We have budget meetings that we're supposed to start at 1 o'clock. The CAFR item, I think item F will be just a few minutes, but I think item G is going to take just a bit. So I'm, we can either back up budget and continue as planned here or if possible, maybe we could consider a special meeting later this week to cover item G and some other items. I just want to bring your attention, we have a little bit of a time crunch and whatever the will of the board is, we'll adapt. But I want to know if you want to defer G to either a special meeting later this week or next Wednesday? Or what the will of the board is right now to keep the time moving.
Can item G go to next Wednesday?
I'm sorry?
Can item G go to next Wednesday?
I asked Lindsay if we could delay. We do have, the audit component is on the line today too. Could be delayed to next Wednesday or a special meeting later this week if we can find a time on your calendars.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. And I, I was thinking of that before you ever started talking about it. So I, I recommend that, or I make a motion that we defer item G's engulf for a maximum of one week. That gives us an option if you want to have something before that.
Second.
Motion and a second to delay item G up to seven days from now. No other comment? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye.
All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act.
Commissioner.
Tony, bring the PowerPoint. Very briefly, Commissioner, just a quick review of kind of where we're at with CARES Act today. The first slide is just a summary of when we receive the money and kind of what the guidelines were. If you could flip, Tanya, please, one slide. There we go. It's kind of a summary. And then the next slide is also a summary of kind of the structure we have put together to manage this. There is one additional component within that framework there that is not up there and that is the BKD audit capacity. Our county auditor also will be managing and helping us to manage this and, and watch this. The federal stimulus review team has been solidified now. I, I sent you an email and there's all the members of the review team going forward. Melanie McCray has been added. She is a president and CEO of Miller's Incorporated and she's also a former state rep and a former county commissioner. And Dr. Melissa Walker has been added from Wichita State University, interim director of Hugo Wall. So I just want you to know that that has been firmed up. And then the important slide here is kind of next steps where we're at. We are in daily contact with Whittle Brian now. The CARES Act and the CARES money evolves daily. So we are in constant contact with them. Whittle, we have the advantage with Whittle Brian. They represent a number of other counties and cities across the country, so they will be able to give us best practices. They are recommending that we come up with a strategic plan of a prioritization of this board, of you, the people, on how this money is going to be spent and have, have an actual strategy so that there is a framework to it and a prioritization. So we are working with them to build that. Next week at the meeting, Lindsay and Brent will be here. They will step you through the various spreadsheets of what we have already, what we already think qualifies for CARES money from Cedric County. So they will have that for you next week, line item by line item. We'll get that to you in advance so you can review it as well. And then we kind of draw a line and then we'll stand there and as we move forward, we stand our process up and move all further types of acquisitions through this process. We will continue to help businesses. Some, I've talked with some of you. It feels like we're on a five-lane highway right now. We have all of these stimulus packages out there as well as FEMA money and small businesses and everyone has access to many of those lanes of traffic. And one of those lanes is the CARES money. So we want to make sure that we are giving businesses and those who need help right now proper direction. And a, a big component is the FEMA money. All nonprofits and municipalities in Cedric County have access to this FEMA portal. They have their own portal. They don't have to go through the county to get that. Jessica Ostmeyer in our office is giving advice on that to, to people. So as we continue to go down this track of, of CARES money, we just want to make sure that we are giving our citizens and our businesses, nonprofits, et cetera, the best advice possible moving forward. And I see Lindsay in the room. Did Lindsay, did you want to speak to any of this or you? Okay, very good. So that's just the summary, give you an update. We'll have more for you again next week. And you'll hear something every week at commission meeting about CARES money from now until the end of the year, so.
Okay. Oh, go ahead. Commissioner?
Thank you. Yesterday afternoon, I got a phone call from Josh Bell, who is congressman, SCS chief of staff. And he said that they have some changes to this, which the Treasury Department has allowed local governments to actually use it in far more ways than we initially thought.
Yeah.
Which is great news. And I forwarded that on to the chairman and not to break any open meetings laws. I just forwarded to the chairman and you, Mr. Chair. But have we, have you sent that out to the other commissioners?
I am not sure. We are, that was brand new information yesterday. We're going to validate that through Mr. Bell's. We're going to validate that through Mr. Bell's office and as soon as that's validated, we will shove that to the rest of the commissioners. But long story short, rest assured, when this money originally came out, it seemed to be very focused on government need and it is broadening almost daily on what, and that's why I think that you as a commission will have a lot of policy decision in the future on prioritization and how we actually move forward and spend this money. So we'll keep you aware, we're still gathering that data.
Yeah, well, it was, it was a very welcome phone call when I got that from him yesterday. And so I just wanted to publicly thank Congressman Estes and Josh Bell for acknowledging what our issues were here. And then they're also working with the governor's office because we're the only county in his entire congressional district that got any money because of our population size. So we are extremely fortunate because the other dozen counties in their area don't have any, you know, solid amounts of money they're going to receive. So their planning's a lot more difficult than ours is as far as what financially we can look at. So if that can get sent to all the commissioners and obviously the legal department as well, we'll, I think this will help with the requests that we continue to have from nonprofits. I have people like from Convoy of Hope asking us for money for more food and necessities for people. I know the Kansas Food Bank and others are really looking at ways that we can help and this is going to open our opportunities a lot. So thank you to Congressman Estes for that.
I was going to add that, Tom, our discussion before about Whit O'Brien, he, that group, that organization is also advising numerous.
Yes.
Municipalities and states around the country. So hopefully they'll, he'll always how to disperse this money and what are the controls and the options available. So I'm glad that, is that, is his first name Whit? Or is that the name of the company?
I'll have to refer to Lindsay on that. So we chose to spend the very first few dollars of this CARES money on getting help to manage it and audit it. So that was a good decision on her part.
All right. Well, anyway, I'm glad. So thank you. Okay, so thanks for the update.
Receive and file, please, sir.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I actually have a recommendation for us to consider. Thinking about the test sites for COVID-19 testing, if we have a transportation need, I think we could consider potentially using this money to solve that problem pretty easily, I would think. So I would say if we don't have transportation available to give someone a ride to a test site, maybe we ought to consider fast-tracking, if you will, a decision to get a vehicle that's conducive to that, to dispatch that vehicle, to pick up people and take them to testing and then take them back. The other way, of course, is a mobile test site, which may, is another way to solve the problem, but I think that's, that may be much more complicated than simply just having a vehicle that can do this. I envision maybe a sedan or a van with hard, you know, hard surfaces can be wiped down between people and protect the driver. Just an idea.
Is there a motion to receive and file?
Second.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yeah. Yes, I'm very supportive of that motion. My question would be with what Commissioner Howell said, is that something that we could make a motion to allow the manager to make a purchase or an acquisition if he feels like that's what we need to do as far as testing? Because I know he's limited with dollars.
Lindsay, get to the, I will say that, of course, we work for the will of the board and I, as we're trying to interpret CARES and understand, I'm pretty confident that direct government acquisitions that help combat COVID-19 are allowable under CARES. So I think that that's probably a pretty safe bet, but I'll defer to CFO here.
Good morning, Commissioners, Lindsay, or good afternoon, excuse me, Lindsay Porter, so you're CFO. So the guidance that did come out yesterday, that's seven pages, so still not a ton of information, does seem to restrict our ability to actually acquire equipment in capital outlay type events. So what I would encourage is maybe let us get Whit O'Brien's online. We should have them, our intro call with them this week. And then we can use, we have a number of requests we've received from folks with questions about eligibility and so we can submit it to them and see if that's something that based on what they know, if that's an acceptable expense or not. And then maybe we can come back to you next Wednesday with a recommendation or a motion similar to what you.
Would a motion be helpful at this point or can you just get the information and bring it back?
We'll just get the information and bring it back.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis?
I agree. I think that if we're going to follow the guidance that we're going to vote to receive and file, we've got a county financial team to review it. We've got a review team, federal stimulus review team, and we got Whit O'Brien, all if we start making motions from the bench on what to do, then we just bypassed all of the procedures that managers put in place that we think is a good idea. So not that I'm saying it's not a good idea, I just think that it ought to go through the process.
So to that line, how dynamic is this process? If we have a need we identified today, how long to get through the process to get a decision back that we can do something?
So I think based on the exceptions that you all made for COVID-19 and the exception and the approval authority that you've given to the manager, that as long as he advises you either before concurrent with the decision, I think as long as we have clear guidelines and we know what the expectation is from CARES, we can go ahead and make that purchase under those options and use Joe Thomas, our purchasing director, to expedite that process. To the extent that it's a little iftier, if we don't know if it's eligible, that might delay that because we do want to definitely consult Whit O'Brien to make sure we're not spending money we shouldn't. That doesn't mean the commission can't choose to spend your own money on something. Maybe it's just not eligible. So I think that's an important consideration to think about, too. And then there's always public assistance we can go and apply for. It may not be full reimbursement, but there are options for us. It's not just the CARES funding that we have to focus on.
Okay. All right. Motion to receive and file. And I think there was a second by Commissioner Dennis. So Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H, consideration of one item for procurement.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. We are presenting to you one item for your approval and that item is Just Wear Soft Support 2020 for the Division of Information and Technology. This recommendation is set the quote from Journal Technologies Incorporated and it's in the amount of $140,887.30. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and I recommend approval.
Any questions? Okay, thank you for getting the information from last week to us.
Yes, sir.
So I'll make a motion to approve the item H.
I'll second.
And a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Stolz recommend approving consent items I through P this afternoon.
Okay, Commissioners, you've been able to see the consent items I through P. Are there any questions about any items?
Who to approve I through P?
Second.
Been a motion to approve items I through P. Being no, being no comments, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
The only thing I'd have to add here, Mr. Chairman, is that the Legislative Coordinating Council's meeting, I believe, at 3:00 this afternoon, so we may know more about what the legislature is going to be doing after that.
That's at 3:00?
3:00.
Is that able to be viewed or listened to? Good, okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other?
Do the Commissioners have anything in the other to share? Okay, I see nothing, so we do not have an executive session today. So with that, thanks for the long meeting, but we will stand adjourned.
How long do you all need? Can we delay budget?